Good morning, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to today's Chicago Board of Education meeting. Today is May 23rd, 2018, and we are holding today's meeting in the boardroom at 42 West Madison Street. I am Frank Clark, and on behalf of my fellow board members, I want to thank everyone for coming today. That young child has a future. That voice projects really well. Our planned order of business will include honor and excellence, our CEO report, followed by public participation. We will then go into executive session, and then we will return to start the voting process. As I do at every meeting, I want to remind everyone that courteous and civil behavior is both expected and desired from our audience. Madam Secretary, please leave us in the pledge.
Thank you, Mr. President. Please rise.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The regular meeting of Wednesday, May 23rd, 2018, is hereby called to order. Madam Secretary, please call the roll.
Thank you, Mr. President. Member Furlong.
Present.
Member Garza.
Present.
Vice President Guzman.
Present.
Member Dr. Heinz.
Present.
Member Ward.
Present.
And President Clark.
Present.
Six members present. We have a quorum, and I would also like to introduce Dr. Janice Jackson, our CEO, Joseph Moriarty, our General Counsel, Latanya McDade, our Chief Education Officer, Elizabeth Keenan, the Chief of Diverse Learner and Support Services, William Cryer, our Honorary Student Board Member, and Aisha Ahmed Jr. from San High School, who is joining us today.
Thank you very much. Let me start by saying today is William's last board meeting. William, stand up and let everybody see you. He's graduating, he's getting ready, he's going to be attending the Iowa State University. What are you going to major in, William?
Architecture.
Architecture.
Yes.
Another bright young man with a great future. William has had a wonderful experience, as all of our student board members have had, and has shared some of his comments. I think that seeing the democratic process at work has, I think, inspired him and encouraged him to continue to be a leader and to participate in public debate. And William, would you introduce our new student?
Okay.
Well, actually not, because you were here at the last board meeting, right?
Yeah.
Mr. President, if I may just intercede, before he does that, I know William has just a few remarks he'd like to present.
Okay, so I just wanted to say good morning to you all.
Good morning.
Okay, I want to thank President Clark and members of the board. I would like to first off saying that it was a pleasure to serve as honorary student board member. This was truly a diverse learning experience, and I have been able to see how our system works, along with seeing board members take action to ensure the success of CPS schools. I'll now introduce Asha Ammar as our new honorary student board member for the school year of 2018 to 2019. Asha, would you like to say a few words?
Good morning. My name is Asha Ahmed. I'm a junior at San High School. I'm extremely honored to have been selected as an honorary student board member for 2018-2019 school year. I'm highly involved in many different clubs and activities at my school. Student voice is an aspect of participation I extremely value, as it encourages engagement from all students, no matter their background. This is truly an incredible opportunity, and I look forward to representing the voice of students within CPS. I would like to thank President Clark and the board members, and I look forward to serving on the board. Thank you so much for the warm welcome.
We're really very, very glad to have you, and this is an outstanding example. You're going to be challenged. We have a young person trying to take your job right now. But I thank and hope that you'll find it a very rewarding experience. Okay. So let's proceed with honor and excellence. I tell you, good morning. Do you want to get started?
Yep. Good morning, everyone. Thank you for joining us at the Board of Education's May meeting. We begin every board meeting by recognizing accomplishments of our students and school communities. Today, we are excited to welcome the Varsity Singers from Limbloom Math and Science Academy. This ensemble is led by Choral Director and Member of the CEO's Teacher Advisory Council, Casey Fuse, who is now in his seventh year at Limbloom. We heard this talented group perform at the ceremony to honor this year's National Board Certified Teachers, and decided right then that we had to bring them to a Board of Education meeting, so that more of the CPS community could experience their music. Once you hear them sing, it will be easy to see why this choir has performed all over the country this year, including at Joint Voices Choral Festival here in Chicago and at Disney World in Orlando, Florida. The Varsity Singers received superior ratings at both the CPS Choral Festival and the IHSA Choral Festival this school year, and even recorded at the historic Chicago Recording Company. They are a passionate, dedicated group who challenge and support each other in equal measure. Today, they will be performing a piece for us that has deep Chicago roots. Here to give us some background on that piece is Ife Maloney, President of the Limbloom Varsity Singers. Is Ife here?
Yes. Hello. Okay. Good evening. We are honored to perform a piece called Precious Lord, which was composed by Thomas A. Dorsey, the father of gospel music. Dorsey was born in Georgia and moved to Chicago to study at the Chicago Music College. After graduating, Dorsey served as the Director of Music at Chicago's Pilgrim Baptist Church for over 40 years. Precious Lord is one of Dorsey's most popular and intimate pieces that tells the story of hardship, bereavement, and hope. In 1932, Thomas Dorsey and his wife Nettie were expecting a baby. About eight months into Nettie's pregnancy, Mr. Dorsey traveled to St. Louis for an important performance. While he was away, his wife gave birth and lost her life during delivery. Dorsey rushed back to Chicago to find his wife dead and his precious baby boy smiling up at him. He didn't know whether to feel joy or to grieve. That night, his baby boy passed away, and Dorsey no longer had a family. He felt hopeless and neglected by God. He locked himself in his home until the funeral, where he buried his wife and child in the same casket. In this period of grief, Dorsey composed one of the most famous gospel songs of the 20th century, Precious Lord. Today, we will perform Honor Sevier's arrangement of Dorsey's piece. Sevier, one of Dorsey's proteges, is an alum of Morgan Park High School and is the current music director of Chicago's Pilgrim Baptist Church. Mr. Sevier said, "I arrange this song for it is pain that makes us strong." We hope you enjoy our performance.
(Music) Precious Lord, take my hand. Lead me on, let me stand. I am tired, I am weak. I am worn. Through the storm, through the night. Lead me on to the light. Take my hand, Lord, and lead me home. When my way grows drear. Precious Lord, linger near. When my life is almost gone. On as the river, Lord, I stand. Guide my feet and hold my hand. Take my hand, Lord, and lead me home.
Good morning.
My name is Casey Fuse, and I am the Choir Director and Competency-Based Learning Coordinator at Limbloom Math and Science Academy. Thank you, Dr. Jackson, for the invitation to perform, and thank you, members of the Board of Education, for your kind reception. On behalf of the Choir Directors from Whitney Young, Jones, Peyton, Northside, San, Kenwood, and Solario High Schools, I'd like to present a letter regarding the state of choral music in Chicago Public Schools. Dear Chicago Public Schools CEO Janice Jackson and members of the Chicago Board of Education, we, the signatories of this letter, lead the most well-established choir programs in Chicago Public Schools. Our choirs perform across the country, across our city, and even across the world. Our programs maintain partnerships with Chicago's top music institutions. Many of our graduates attend elite music conservatories and universities, and all of our students develop critical 21st century skills like collaboration, resilience, critical thinking, communication, empathy, and cultural awareness. Unfortunately, we compose this letter with grave concern about the future of choral music education in Chicago Public Schools. The recent expansion of high school graduation requirements, computer science, civics, four-year PE, after the board declined to renew an ISB PE waiver in 2014, present an existential threat to our choir programs. These graduation requirements deny students the opportunity to study choral music over multiple years. Declining enrollment will eliminate full-time choral music positions, and high-performing choral programs cannot be maintained on a part-time basis. Diminishing enrollment in our well-established programs should serve as a canary in a coal mine. Without significant change to CPS high school graduation requirements, our high-performing programs will be impossible to sustain, and smaller programs may disappear entirely. According to our analysis, only 56 of CPS's 181 high schools have choral music programs. Of those 56, less than one-third are robust programs that offer multiple levels of curricular choir. Without board action, we expect these numbers to dramatically diminish. Respectfully, Katie Colby, Casey Fuse, Grace Jong, Kathleen Johnson, Nithya Martinez, Trevor Nicholas, Richard Nunley, Andrew Sons. Thank you again for the opportunity and for letting me share this message.
Thank you, Casey. President Clark, if you don't mind, can I speak first? First, Casey, I want to thank you and thank the choir for coming down here. As Chief McDade said in her introductory remarks, after you guys surprised me and serenaded me at the National Board Teachers Event, I couldn't, you know, I needed to share the work that you guys are doing more broadly with the district. It's also important to note the importance of leadership. It's not just about the arts and about expanding opportunities for students, that these students serve as leaders, and I know that if not the entire choir, members of the choir participated in the 20 for 20 song last year to help raise awareness around funding inequity, and so it's, you know, it's more than just an expression. Casey serves on our Teacher Advisory Council, which is a group that I started the past two, I think we're ending our second year, and the goal was to allow teachers an opportunity to help influence policy in the district, and that's demonstrated by the letter that Casey just read. The one thing that I will say about it is that as we continue to raise the rigor for graduation requirements in Chicago Public Schools, it does put a burden on all students and schools to make choices about what will be prioritized. But I would be remiss if I didn't point out one other change that we made to the graduation requirement to solve for some of the things that you just pointed out, which is we made it so that students could take two years, they have to take two years of art, but in the past, they had to take two different disciplines, art and, or visual art, performing arts. We made it so that a student could continue a sequence. So in fact, our current graduation requirements do allow students to take multiple years of any discipline. Choir could be one of them, obviously others, and there is still room in the current graduation requirements for elective courses. But I would love to continue this discussion if there are other recommendations for waivers or things that we can put in place to allow individual students who want to extend that beyond two years. I'm happy to have those discussions, but right now, I believe with the three electives and the two years, students can take up to five years of any elective of their choosing. So we'd love to have that conversation and extend it, but I really want to thank you guys for being both a supporter of the district, but also someone who's always pushing us to be better and be great, just like Limbloom. So thank you for coming here today, and I look forward to extending this conversation.
Thank you so much, Mr. Fuse. Ife and the entire Limbloom Varsity Singers, that was absolutely fantastic. Thank you so much. Next, it's my pleasure to welcome the members of the 2017-2018 CPS.
Can I ask one quick question? Are all the students wearing shirts of the colleges that they're going to? Okay, so let's make sure we get a good shot out of that. Phenomenal schools.
All right. The 2017-2018 CPS Student Advisory Council. This cohort of student leaders will be wrapping up their service in a few weeks, so we wanted to take a moment to acknowledge their incredible work that they've been doing all year on behalf of students around the district. With support from the MiCA Challenge, which is our partner in this work, these students have focused on critically important issues, including increasing student input when it comes to the allocation of resources in their schools. They've researched the issues for several months, then created a budgeting workshop to help student councils and student voice committees better understand how funds come in and out of their schools. They also created a dynamic campaign to encourage more students to serve as representatives on their local school councils, and thanks to their efforts, more than 5,000 young people applied to fill these roles in 2018. Beyond their policy work, the Student Advisory Council took on responsibilities citywide, helping to host our Summer Administrators Summit, conducting workshops at the annual CPS Student Leadership Conference, and supporting several youth initiatives outside CPS. We congratulate these students on their hard work and thank the MiCA Challenge for their support as we continue our goal of increasing student voice in CPS. At this time, I would like to welcome MiCA's Aldermanic Youth Council Director, Monica Gutierrez, and Lane Tech Senior, Uriel Banderas, to say a few words about the Student Advisory Council. Uriel, you want to go first?
So I would like to start off that being a part of this council has been an unforgettable journey that has really shaped me into, shaped me into the individual I am today. I have become a passionate, confident, young man of my community, and I have this council to thank for that. I remember, but that wasn't always the case. I remember when I first came into this council, I had this desire to make a difference, but I didn't have the courage to overcome the fear that prevented me from doing so. That's where the council came into place. This council has really opened up that gateway that helped eradicate that fear, that fear of negligence, that fear that really told me that I didn't have a voice, and it really struck me that it enhanced my confidence, and because of this council, I have become the individual that I am today. I remember before I joined this council, I wasn't able to read a paper out loud in front of a classroom setting, in front of like 15 people. Oh, how times have changed. I'm proud to say that I've been a part of numerous events where I helped host in front of big audiences. I've facilitated workshops in front of hundreds of youth, youth individuals, of adults, of individuals of our society. I have been a part of focus groups with really powerful people, meetings. I have even helped present in a principal's meeting, which I was pretty proud of, because that's, I've never been a part of like that many principals, in presence of many principals. So yeah, I have this council to really, really thank for that, because I have really changed as a person from a really shy, introverted kid into a really, into a really powerful individual who's not afraid to say what they believe in. And so before I end this, I would like to thank Dr. Jackson for the numerous, for all the time she has helped us, all her time, all her effort. She has really helped develop this council, helped us accomplish many goals, and I would like to thank the board for really recognizing us for all our hard work and not letting it go like blindsided, because it's a huge privilege to be along with these individuals who I consider my, consider my family, because they really have done a great job in this council. Thank you.
Monica.
I have to ask, when did you say you were shy and hesitant to speak publicly? You did an outstanding job.
Thank you so much.
Hi, my name is Monica Gutierrez. I've had the honor of being the facilitator for the CPS Student Advisory Council now for the past two years. This is a collective of 20 students from across the district who are passionate about education and bringing equitable solutions to issues that CPS students are facing. Chief McDade already shared a lot of their accolades, but what I will say is that we have, I've been able to see them grow as leaders, they have seen them grow as facilitators, and even now, after a year, they answer my calendar invitations, so that's good. The work that they do is to bring a voice to the table of young people, so it's really important that we have grown local school councils in allowing students to have not only a voice in the district, but in their schools and their communities. So I couldn't be prouder of the work that they've been doing, as well as I'd love to thank Dr. Jackson for all the support that she's offered us, as well as our partners in the Office of Civic Engagement, Christina Salgado and Jessica Marshall. They've given us access to student voice committees and the issues that students are doing in their schools, as well as hosting quarterly networking meetings. We get to really pool from student leaders what issues they're passionate about and then be a voice for those issues. So thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Just a couple of things, unless you guys don't have any remarks. Some people might think the meeting that I worry the most about is the board meeting once a month, but it's actually when I have to come to the Student Advisory Council meetings, because these students come super prepared to every single meeting, and I would like them to talk a little bit about some of the policy solutions that they have offered up this year. But I want to just highlight the fact that I know Uriel spoke on behalf of the group, but any one of these students could stand up here and blow you away with their depth of knowledge about a variety of topics. You know, you really have to be at the top of your game to go into a meeting with them, because they have opinions, they care about the school system, but they also are well-read and well-researched, and they engage not just district leadership, but city leadership, elected officials, their principals, and we talk about every single topic. They have policy solutions that they offer this year, but when there were issues around school cleanliness, or special education, or LSCs, they do not hesitate to raise those as issues, and I know that there are individual stories, like Kate starting the Student Voice Committee at Jones, and, you know, Dominique standing up for LGBT issues, and just so many, I could go down the line. You guys have really grown, and that's why I wanted you to come to the board meeting, not only to be recognized, but to also make sure, as policies are updated and modified based on your feedback, that you get the credit that you deserve for broadening my thinking and the thinking of the folks in our office that you interact with on a regular basis. So if we could just get a quick sentence of the, I think we're down to two policy recommendations, just state them clearly, so that everybody in the room knows what you have recommended.
You want to talk about?
Jay, Haley, okay.
Hello, my name is Haley Williams, and I, my group worked on helping to expand policy within the LSC. So we recognized that there was only one student position on the LSC currently, and students also aren't allowed to vote on the budget, and we felt as though there needs to be more student voice, so we wanted to add additional spots for students onto the LSC, and we also wanted to expand student capabilities, so that they do have a voice in voting on their school's budget.
Excellent. Excellent. What was the other item, Dr. Jackson?
You. Okay. We got it. Hi.
Hello, I'm Tatum Thompson, and I was part of the group that worked to create a workshop to help students understand how the budget works, how complex it is, how much goes into it, because students know that there are issues in budgeting, but we don't exactly know what goes into every single calculation. So our group worked on creating a better understanding for students.
And how many students did you train on that?
Oh.
A couple?
So we did two workshops of 30 students.
Two, okay, great. So they created a training to help the average individual, starting with students, understand the budget, and they know the inner workings of our school budget deeply. So if anybody has questions, you can talk to the budget group. They also gave us a lot of recommendations, some of which, you know, we will hear today. So President Clark, again, thank you for allowing me to have them speak today. I'm just so proud of the work that they're doing, and really wanted that acknowledged throughout the city.
Any comments, board members? Questions?
I just, I want to thank you all for what you've done, and I hope this is the beginning of a journey for you all in terms of civic engagement. You're finding your voice, but you have this voice for the rest of your lives, so please continue to make it heard, right? Because we're listening, and other folks will listen to you as well.
Thank you very much. We're proud of all of you.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you. I would now like to share a few academic updates. Let me start by congratulating Benny Siwikala, a student at Namaste Charter School, on winning season six of Master Chef Junior, which is a culinary competition television series hosted by world-renowned chef Gordon Ramsay. Benny is from Chicago's Pilsen neighborhood, and she has cooked nearly perfectly throughout the entire competition. Her meal for the final round of competition included veal chops, which is something she had never cooked before, but Benny believes in taking risks, so she went for it, and it obviously paid off. She is now Chicago's first-ever winner of Master Chef Junior, which is a prestigious title that comes with a $100,000 prize.
Wow.
I was glad to hear that Benny wants to use that prize to continue her education, ideally as a student in culinary school. She also hopes to launch a food truck one day, which I hope she brings to Chicago. Earlier this week, we celebrated more than 300 CPS seniors who earned at least 15 hours of college credit while in high school. Each of these students now has at least one semester of college in their back pocket, and some went much further than that. 18 students from Good High School and one student from Kenwood High School have actually earned 60 or more college credits. As amazing as it sounds, this is a full year of college before high school graduation. These opportunities obviously save our students time and money, but that is only part of their value. Programs like this give our students confidence, helping them see that they have the talent, drive, and dedication to use this head start as a springboard towards completing their degrees. I congratulate our students on their hard work and thank our mayor, Mayor Rahm Emanuel, and the City Colleges of Chicago for making this possible for our students by investing in dual credit, dual enrollment, and opportunities like the Star Scholarship, which are making college more accessible and affordable for all Chicago students. As we continue to invest in our science curriculum and align it to the next-generation science standards, we will be making a recommendation to invest $10 million into core science instructional materials for grades K through 8. These materials are aligned to the next-generation science standards and have been carefully vetted by educators from across the district and the CPS STEM department to ensure quality and uniformity across the district. As the district's Chief Education Officer, I am thrilled that our students will have more equitable access to high-quality instructional materials. Thank you. I would now like to turn it over to Dr. Jackson for the CEO's report.
Thank you, Chief McDade.
Dr. Jackson, can I interrupt?
Sir, yeah.
Before Dr. Jackson starts his CEO report, because one of the things you're going to cover is going to be the special education, and I'm sure that we will hear from a number of people in the audience regarding this very important issue. But I want to read a very brief statement on behalf of the board. The board is committed to ensuring that the quality of special education programs at CPS is among our highest priorities. We are confident, and I emphasize the word confident, that our CEO, Dr. Janice Jackson, will work tirelessly to unite parents, schools, and the community around this priority. And with that statement, I turn it over to you, Dr. Jackson.
Thank you, President Clark. I will modify the order of my remarks. I do have three updates. I'll start with special education. As President Clark pointed out, reforming and righting the wrongs of the past around special education is a top priority. I've said on record several times that some of the changes that were made were done too quickly, and we and we acknowledge the fact that they were done without sufficient parent and educator involvement. And we're committed to ensuring that that mistake does not happen again. We're also fully committed to the recommendations that came out of the ISB inquiry, and we, our goal is to make sure that we can unite both the district and parents and advocates around special education and ensure that the gap that, you know, obviously exists right now does not exist as we move forward. I believe that some of the changes that we've made already are a show of good faith to move in that direction, but also believe that there's still room for growth to ensure equity throughout the district. Transitioning back to the top of my remarks, I do want to build on the remarks that Latonya McDade made around our investment in science. We're very proud of the progress that Chicago Public Schools has made across the board, particularly in reading and mathematics. However, we know that there are other disciplines that also require more of an investment, and I personally believe that investments in science is one of the core equity issues that we must address. If we truly believe that we're preparing the future scientists, doctors, and biomedical engineers, et cetera, for the 21st century, we must make sure that students have facilities to match that. This is why we made an investment of $75 million to high school science labs throughout the district. The goal here is to ensure that every single school has one state-of-the-art science lab that allows for students and teachers to engage in both project-based learning and inquiry, as well as have a classroom setting that is appropriate for a 21st-century education and the jobs of the future. We're really proud of this because, once again, we had to make a decision about how to use the limited funds that we had to support the students. And I'm very happy to report that 80 of our high schools, mostly neighborhood high schools in the district, will be the beneficiaries of this investment. Finally, I'd like to take a moment to acknowledge the report by the Consortium on School Closures that occurred in 2013. There are a few things that came out of that report that I think are noteworthy, and I want to make sure we have an opportunity to address them publicly. First, I want to start by saying that it is very true that in every part of Chicago, including the impacted communities with school closures, there are better options for students, higher-quality schools, and more students are graduating, and the data around how our students perform is clear. We also acknowledge the fact that the process in 2013 was imperfect. And I was struck by some of the comments and the findings in the report that talked about educators' experience, experiences related to the school closures, as well as the impact on student academic achievement. As a former teacher, principal, and now CEO and parent, it is my priority to ensure that families feel respected and valued, and that will be a hallmark of my administration. We all share the same goal of access to a high-quality education and high-quality schools throughout the district. And I believe that the only way to get there is to make continued investments in high poverty, in areas of high poverty, and some of our underrepresented areas to bring about the type of equity that's needed in order to close these gaps. You will not hear any plan from me regarding wide-scale or large-scale school closures. I've said that on record many times and committed to that. I also want to make sure that people understand that we are working in collaboration with the consortium, looking at those findings, and will make sure that any school actions that have already been approved by the Board of Education and CPS, that we will be taking those learnings and ensuring, once again, that the individuals impacted receive sustained resources over time, not just one year after the closure, but we've committed to the students in the Inglewood Act School Action, for example, to sustain support until they graduate from high school. This concludes my CEO report.
Thank you very much, Dr. Jackson. Board members, questions, comments?
I have one different, though, a different subject. Dr. Jackson, I'm wondering if you or someone from your team would provide an update on what's happening with facilities? Whether you want to go into blitz reports or, you know, but some level of detail, what's happening?
Yeah, I'm going to turn it over to Arnie, and I'm going to ask him to respond to that, but to also respond to capital updates as well. Because as I look at the speakers' list for today, I notice that there are a lot of students here from Washington High School. And first of all, I want to commend them for their action. I know that Chief McDade had an opportunity to visit the school. Both Arnie and I have had conversations with the principal and school leadership, and I want to acknowledge their presence. We're obviously going to hear from them today, but I think it's appropriate to provide an update overall prior to those remarks. So, Arnie.
Thank you, Dr. Jackson. Board members, when I presented to you last month, we noted that we had conducted 125 blitz inspections to date through April. Those are the ones that, of that 125, 90 did not pass. As I noted at the meeting, you know, with a small handful, we had re-inspected, remedied those schools to get to a certain level. What we also committed to last month is blitzing the remaining 400-plus schools between April 24th and the end of the school year. It's a moving target, given the nature of how many schools we're inspecting on a daily basis. But we've inspected over 200 since the last board meeting, and we have results for a little more than 150. The, the pass rates on those have significantly increased to close to 70%, while encouraging, you know, as I stated, you know, at the, the board meeting last month, a lot of it could be simply human behavior, you know, in light of the reports that were there. I think from, from my team's vantage point, the most important component of this is really making sure that we have a clear understanding, school by school, of the condition going into summer so that we can put together a comprehensive plan on the cleanliness, the maintenance, and the capital work to ensure that we get our schools to a certain standard by the start of next school year. On the Washington front, as Dr. Jackson mentioned, Chief McDade was at the school a few, probably about a month ago, took a tour with the students and immediately requested that I go out there with my team and do an assessment of the facility. I met with the same group of students that Chief McDade did, and I could, you know, I echo Dr. Jackson and Chief McDade's points in that. They were incredibly passionate, great advocates of the school, incredibly well-informed, and I can honestly say some of the most respectful students that I've had a chance to meet. Spent about an hour and a half there evaluating the building, taking a look at some of the operational facility issues. I know that there have been some issues with the moderation of temperature, some locker room issues. There have been a number of remedies on that front, but there are also some major structural issues around the roof and the masonry and the overall building envelope. You know, ultimately, my assessment and my team's assessment confirm that as we finalize our FY19 capital budget, that Washington High School will indeed be at the top of the prioritization list, so.
Okay, just to follow up, Arnie. So it's, I think, good news on the second round of schools, that instead of 70%-ish fail, it's 70%-ish pass. Do we learn anything new about how these schools got to this condition in this next round?
To be honest with you, I think a lot of it, you know, with the other schools, we knew that, you know, A, they were the schools that were on the previous model, and B, this was before, you know, a lot of media coverage on it. You know, when we talked to the principals, I think, you know, in, in certain instances, especially those schools that are IFM, where we are seeing a higher, you know, pass rate, when, you know, when they have a good facility manager, you know, at the vendor site, you know, what we, what we hope for is that principals feel empowered again. So ultimately, longstanding issues, you know, around, you know, equipment, maintenance, or just general complaints about, you know, the inappropriate coverage of certain areas from a custodial perspective were less prevalent than some of these other schools. You know, but a, as I've stated before, you know, in certain schools that are under the IFM model, if they didn't have a great facility manager on the vendor site, we encountered similar issues to those schools on the custodial service only. You know, I mean, when we talked to principals, there was an acknowledgement that, you know, they didn't want to deal with the backlash that other schools had faced, you know, you know, given the prior coverage. So that, like I said, there, there is certainly a human behavior element associated with it.
I would also add, too, that we also saw a correlation between the cleanliness and some capital issues. So there were some schools where, you know, you could have a good facilities manager, you could have adequate staff, but there were capital issues that were contributing to some of the rodent issues and other things that have been pointed out. So one of the things that Arnie, Arnie's team has been charged to do is to not only look at it from a managerial standpoint and resource allocation standpoint, from a staffing perspective, but to also look and see if these schools need to be prioritized in other ways from a capital standpoint to prevent some of the issues that are related to that.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments from board members? Okay, I have just one announcement to make. It's the same one I make at every board meeting, to encourage participation and use of our website, cpsboe.org. And with that, Madam Secretary, would you please share the details for the next board meeting?
Thank you, Mr. President. The next board meeting will be held on Wednesday, June 27, 2018, at the CPS Loop Office. Advanced registration will open at 10:30 a.m. Monday, June 25, 2018, and will close on Tuesday, June 22, 2018, at 5 p.m., or until all slots are filled, whichever is first. If anyone has any questions about this process, please contact the board office for our assistance. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. Now, let's proceed with today's public participation session. Madam Secretary, please share the rules for public participation.
Thank you, Mr. President. Speakers, please listen while I provide directions for public participation. I will call your name and number when it is your turn to speak. When you hear your name, please immediately proceed to the staging area to the left of the podium and check in with our board office staff member, Eric. You will be lined up in the right order. When it is your turn to speak, proceed to the podium and state your name. After you state your name, I will then start the two-minute clock, which is visible to all in the audience. I would also like to note that there is a timer on top of the podium for the speakers to see. When there are 30 seconds remaining, the color will turn yellow, and when the two minutes are up, the light will turn to red. Please immediately take your seat when your time is up to allow for the next speaker to begin. Also, for anyone who plans to stand in support of a speaker, please be aware that the only walkway in the boardroom is behind the podium. Therefore, if you would kindly make a single file line and stand as near as the, near the railing as possible, this will still allow people to pass through the area safely. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. President. So, Mr. President, we will start by calling CTU Representative Michael Brunson first, please.
Good morning, everyone.
Good morning.
Morning, Michael.
During the 2017 school year, I came before this board with a number of discipline issues at a particular school. I read to you a shocking litany of offenses that were endured, not only by students, but also by staff members that I represent. I have a new list. Constant fights in classrooms, students walking out of classrooms, profane and threatening language directed towards staff, theft and destruction of teachers' personal property, weapons found on school grounds. Now, I'm not here today to put a particular school on blast, and although I insist that this be addressed immediately, this is not an isolated event. That's important to understand that. This is representative of what I am seeing as I go into a number of schools and hearing from other educators at schools that I have yet to visit. I am an educator, and in my view, education is not just about test scores and academics. In my classroom, I would always tell my students, I don't care how many As you get, how many degrees or certificates that you can earn. They are not unimportant, but if you go out into the world and into the workplace and you don't know how to conduct yourself in a civil, circumspect, and professional manner, no employer and very few people will ever want to be bothered with you. Your behavior counts. I've said this before, and I'll keep saying this, education is the most effective preventative that we have against crime, violence, mayhem, murder, and carjacking. Our educational system has an opportunity to inculcate our youth with humane, social, civil, and civic values that will make more police or a police state not just unnecessary, but a thing of the past. Education has the potential to bring about a peace that no police force, no military force, war, prison system, or graveyard ever will. And it starts with the educational environment, the culture and climate. In all these schools where I see these problems, the first thing that I notice is that there are not enough adults in the building. What happened to the pair of professionals, the ones that you call ESPs, the teachers assistants, the school assistants, the clerks? They play a key role in maintaining an optimal educational environment, and they help to maintain a nurturing and respectful, respectful environment in our schools. And I bring this up because it is not just a matter of reducing stress, nervous exhaustion, and PTSD among the educators that I represent. It is about taking note of the type of citizens that our schools are expected to create. We need to work together to address this culture and climate problem in our schools and have a serious discussion about how to truly implement restorative practices. Now, related to this, and I'll, and I'll conclude, CPS has a legal obligation to address systemic shortcomings in our special education program. And we cannot wait for a state monitor to come and help us get up to speed and to address these persistent problems. Teachers and parents are still reporting issues today, from staff shortages to stalled approvals of needed supports. So I'll say that we at CTU, what have, what we at CTU have been saying for years, it is incumbent upon CPS to fully reverse your deep budget cuts and chronic denial of services to our most vulnerable students immediately. Special education students are not just being short-changed in district public schools. Our members who work at private charter operators are reporting chronic staff shortages, shortages, and charter operators who fail to comply with federal law and charters as well. It is incumbent upon you to provide supports and services and bring programming up to the, up to the standards of the law for every student in our school district, in district-run schools, in contract schools, and in charter schools funded by public dollars and run by private operators. Let me just conclude with this. Things fall apart. The center cannot hold. Mere anarchy is loosed upon the world. The best lack all conviction, while the worst are full of passionate intensity. That's what happens when things fall apart. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'd like to talk about that school I was at.
I, I was going to specifically ask you, particularly when you pointed out those areas, frankly, where student, or literally, or staff, or teachers' property have been damaged, have been threatened. I was looking at Jaden behind you. Have you shared those specific schools from, because?
As a matter of fact, I've submitted a grievance on it in 14-2, which is expected to have someone go out to that school within three days of, you know, receiving it. I'm not sure if anyone has been out there yet. I filed it last week.
Okay.
But I would like to talk to someone before I leave. Jaden?
Well, she's right behind you, and she, she's, before you leave, those specific ones, Michael, you covered a broad area. Your views and your comments on the importance of education, I don't think anyone sitting up here, frankly, in the audience would disagree. I thought they were excellent comments and, and correct comments. And again, it's, it's an opportunity for a collective effort, not CPS or the board versus CTU. It's got to be a collaborative effort. The things that we've learned that we have to do better. You heard Dr. Jackson acknowledge that, even on the special education front. But whenever I hear specific episodes or issues in individual schools where, whether it's students or teachers, someone has actually been threatened, that, that's something we need, we ought to be able to get to the bottom of and address immediately. So she, she, on that one piece of your comments, let's make sure to share. You two talk before you leave.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for your concern.
Thank you, Mr. Brunson. Mr. President will now turn to the speakers list, and I will call speakers out of order. Our first speaker, please, is going to be speaker number 13, Danielle Giles, followed by speaker number 23, Mr. Ken Bennett, please. After those two individuals address the board, we'll proceed with speaker number one, Deborah Haas, and then speaker number two, Mary Hughes.
Good morning. My name is Danielle Giles. The reason why I'm here today?
Danielle, can you speak into the mic? I don't think everyone can hear you.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Or you could just move the mic to where you are.
The reason that I am here today is to speak on behalf of my son Zion. Zion is six years old. He is in kindergarten at Bell Elementary School. He loves basketball and riding his bike. He wants to be a poli- He wants to be a police officer when he grows up. We are here today so that you can see a face to a name. You can see a person when we talk about Zion. Zion currently has IEP and is in the Total Communications Program for the deaf at Bell Elementary. Zion also has Ho-Orum Syndrome, which is a hand-heart condition. May of last year, I was told by his team that we have great news. Zion is ready for an oral program. Okay, first thing, what's an oral program? How many of you guys are familiar with an oral program? No one on the team was familiar with it, but they were ready to send him to it. So, let me visit, let me investigate, let me research. After my research, I felt it was best for Zion to stay in the Total Communications Program where he is at Bell. The school did not think so. The school thought, even without my... Just took my... Didn't take anything that I said into consideration and tried to force Zion out of Bell. No one has taken responsibility for their actions. The school says it's the Board. The Board says it's the school. The school has retaliated because I put a stay-put because they tried to literally force him out of school within a week to send him to another school. So, I filed a stay-put, and since that, they took away Zion, his OT, his PT, and all of his paraprofessional support. It's disgusting how I'm treated by the school.
Ms. Giles, excuse me, can you please conclude?
Sure. Dr. Jackson, I have tried contacting you on several occasions to get you to intervene on the unjust treatment that I had at the school. After these several occasions, I got nothing but an email from your attorney. At this point, I didn't have an attorney. It was just me. I go to his IEP meetings, it's me, the mom. Then I have his whole IEP team, which is his clinicians, his teachers. Then we have a Board representative, and then we have two attorneys, me. I don't have an attorney. And then I get the response back from Ms. Jackson, from Dr. Jackson, I'm sorry, attorney. So, it's time for me to get an attorney. Right now, I'm $5,533 and a hole with an attorney. $5,000 that I could spend on him. $5,000 I don't have.
Ms. Giles.
Okay.
Thank you.
We're going to respond to you in a moment, but I think, Ken Bennett, you're going to address... Why don't you speak to?
Good afternoon. So, I do want to start off by saying and commending the Board for the statement that they made in regards to special ed and a commitment to getting that right and funding it properly. I was here maybe about seven months ago. At that time, your predecessor was sitting in that seat, and at that time, I talked about special ed and what was going on in there. And I stated that I felt that the Board needed to do a better job of overseeing what was happening. It was clear. Now, I didn't know what was going on until I actually went to a meeting with Ms. Giles and Zion. I've known their family for years. I have worked for three mayors. I have worked for President Barack Obama and Senator Barack Obama. I've spent over 30 years in government and understanding processes. I have never been more confused than when I have sat in these IEP meetings and I have watched how you have these attorneys who beat down on these parents. And I'll say this one specifically. You have the Board who sends the district reps that come, that beat down on these parents, and they beat down on them to get them to take less services. I also believe this too, and I know it's truthful, that it's people of color. It is brown and it is black people in the city of Chicago that are carrying the burden of these policies. That's my whole thing, is just look at the policies. Look at what's going on. You don't save money, save so much money, and then think you're getting more. If the dollars are being saved, they're being saved because we're taking from the program. This is the thing as well. I'm so glad, I am glad that Dr. Jackson is in his office. We've known each other, and I consider us to be friends, like many of you on the Board I consider to be friends and some of you even mentors. But I will say this right now, when I look at what's going on in Chicago right now, in terms of education, I think of, what is it, 1951, Brown versus the Board of Education. At that time, the policy then was separate but equal. We are separate, but we are unequal. We're unequal in terms of how we're spending our dollars and what we're doing. Special ed is just one area, the weakest of us all, and it's the weakest that we're supposed to take care of. Now, when we talk, I'm glad that you guys addressed the issue in terms of the buildings and capital improvement. I don't want to read any more articles that talk about rodents in schools, some schools, paint chipping. I don't want to hear about that, and it is, whoever's... It's South and West Side schools. There was a commitment made years ago when 51 schools were closed. One of the things I thought I heard was that there was going to be capital improvement made on those receiving schools. The other thing I thought I heard was that there were going to be laptops for those schools, resources for those schools. We need to start there now and get this done. But I will finish this, and you guys know this. It's not easy to get up here and talk to friends in this manner, but it's only a friend that will tell you what you need to hear. So, I've had deep respect for you guys throughout the years. I continue to have respect, but you have the ability to change and to set the future and to send it in a positive direction. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Ken, hi, good to see you. I just want to say that definitely many of the things you're saying are very important, but I'm just hoping that one of the things I know that Mark and the other Board members and we've asked for is consistent reports. And as you know, Dr. Jackson hasn't been in this position a year.
Yes.
So, I really hope that while we address some of the issues, that it's not a beat-down at every Board meeting, and I know you didn't intend it, but it still feels that way, no matter what she says.
Well, it wasn't intended to be a beat-down, but the last time I was here was six months ago, Dr. Heinz.
No, Ken, Ken, I listened to you, and I'll listen to you, you know, again, that's the way we operate.
Yes, ma'am.
Right.
We do, you and I.
So, I'm just saying, whether it intended to be or not, it sort of sounded that way to me a little bit. Maybe it wasn't a beat-down, but it was like she said what she's committed to, she's in the process of trying, we're supporting her, and I'm just saying, give us a chance. That's all. I agree with a lot of the things you're saying, and some of the things have come to light for us, and all I'm saying is, give us a chance.
I have to listen to Dr. Heinz too, because Dr. Heinz always, always gives me motherly and parental advice.
I'm not that old, but anyway.
No. We talk about our kids, and you give me advice. So, I am listening to you, and if it came across, you know, kind of rough, it's because I'm thinking about every day, every moment that goes by that a child is not getting the support they need. And I know you're operating off a policy that was here prior to you getting here. So, I'm just saying, we do need to see these things happen.
Thank you very much, Ken.
Thank you.
I'd like to have our Chief Academic Officer. There were specific issues raised, and obviously, we, on public record, don't go into specifics about individuals, things that are obviously confidential, but to the extent that you can, Ken, you address the issue that was raised, by the way.
Yes. So, this issue is in dispute resolution, so we can't, you know, expound on that too much, but I do want to say that there were some other things that I heard from Ms. Giles around retaliation and such, and so I want to personally work with the Network Chief to investigate that. That's not something that, if that is occurring, that is definitely not something that we support or condone. So, I will personally investigate the claims that are being made about the retaliation. We're hopeful that, I'm sure that the dispute resolution will be, come to be resolved in the near future, but in the interim, I will visit the school. I would like to meet with you personally to get some more details on some of the things that you stated, and we will work to make sure that the environment that you are in is a hospitable place and a learning environment that is suitable for, not just for your student but for all students.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Our next speaker, then, please.
Could I just ask a question? So, since I came all the way down there, is there someone that can meet with her before she leaves here? Because she's... This is probably an inordinate effort to be down here.
I think she's met with a lot of people and wants to meet with somebody at the top, so it's probably with Chief McDade, because we, I think we've exhausted all of those things. So, Chief McDade would be the most appropriate person, but we will prioritize that if you are available later today after she... I know she has to leave early today to go to another event. We will make it at the, you know, at her earliest convenience and networks with your schedule, but I think she's met with quite a few people. She wants to talk to Chief McDade.
And I do personally, I would like to personally meet with you. And Angela, I think, is sitting right in front of you. If you guys can connect and get that information, so I can reach out to Ms. Giles immediately after the meeting.
Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Haas?
Good morning. I'm Deb Haas, a CPS parent and volunteer and a Board Member of Raise Your Hand. On Tuesday, May 1, the Chan Zuckerberg Initiative announced a $14 million grant to support development of so-called personalized learning initiatives in 100 schools in CPS and elsewhere in the Chicago area. $4 million of the grant goes to CPS and $10 million to EdTech Incubator Leap Innovations. CZI is a for-profit, limited liability corporation owned by Facebook CEO Mark Zuckerberg and his wife. In addition to grants, it also makes venture capital investments in EdTech companies, and it's responsible for the operation and development of the Summit Personalized Learning Platform, a system that has raised huge pedagogical and privacy issues and is already in use in at least a dozen CPS schools. Given the issues with Facebook's chronic cavalier treatment of customers' personal data, seeing CPS accept millions from its CEO for a project that will depend heavily on students' personally identifiable information raises major questions and should raise alarm. This grant represents opening up of massive market access to the country's third-largest public school system to the CEO of a company unnoticed worldwide for its exploitation of consumer data. What will CZI, the companies it controls and those it invests in, be getting for this gift to our public schools? What personally identifiable information will our children be asked to hand over to personalize their learning? Unfortunately, as parents of public school students, we are currently not informed of what data is collected on our children by which companies. We can't understand why CPS has tried to scuttle HB 1295 in Springfield when it would require school districts to let parents know exactly this information. Your position is especially confusing because on another bill this session, CPS did the right thing and recognized the need to protect students from tech companies that wanted to target ads to them. When Zuckerberg testified before the U.S. Senate about Facebook's data sharing scandal, Senator Dick Durbin of Illinois asked him a crucial question, the question basically of what information Facebook's collecting, who they are sending it to, and whether they asked me in advance permission to do. Is that a fair thing for a user of Facebook to expect? This is precisely the information that the Student Information Transparency Bill would require public schools and EdTech vendors to provide to families. Instead of lobbying to keep families in the dark about what's being collected on their children, CPS should be looking Zuckerberg's gift horse in the mouth. The EU grilled Zuckerberg yesterday on behalf of its residents. Why isn't CPS grilling him on behalf of our students?
Thank you for your comments.
Ms. Haas, I would like, I don't know where Frank Beleke went, our Chief Policy Officer, but if not today, we should talk because I think there's more agreement than disagreement with your concerns outlined there, so I want to get clarity on the House bills that were referenced and CPS's stance on that. I also would invite Raise Your Hand to be a group that meets with our Chief Information Officer, Field de Barlo, who is working on a privacy, updating the Board's policy on student privacy in light of some of the things that came out of Facebook. So, you know, I'm happy to say, I think there's more that we agree with and disagree with on this. Regarding personalized learning, I just want to let you know that all the schools that participate, they opt in. I just want to make that clear.
Yes, but parents don't opt in or consent, and there's, and their partnership contract with Summit, that Summit signs with schools, limits their liability to only $10,000. There are major concerns. There's never been independent vetting of the security protections despite the fact that they collect and store this information about our children. It's a serious concern.
No, we would love to unpack that.
I appreciate that, Dr. Jackson.
Just to be clear, the LSCs do have to approve in order to do this, so we use the LSCs as the elected body representing the parents. So, happy to walk you through that process, but this is something that we're monitoring closely. We are also making sure that there is a research study coupled with our efforts around personalized learning, so once that contract is finalized, we will make that public.
Cambridge Analytics was a research study.
Well, we're going to do a research study. I think you'll find the researcher credible, but once that contract is approved, we will again make that public. So, the point I'm making here is that the concern, we have the same level of concern that you do, and we would love to work collaboratively with you. I follow what you write on Twitter about this, so I think, like I said, there's more alignment than you might think on this issue.
I appreciate that, and we'll be in touch about meeting with these people.
Okay.
And I just quickly, personalized learning, you know, we're talking about access to teachers. Putting my kid in front of a computer to drill is really not what I want. I want them to have relationships with their teachers, and I want them to have relationships with the maintenance workers in their building, who they know and who their principals get to monitor and control. These are issues we've brought numerous times. The people in buildings really matter.
Yeah.
Thank you, Ms. Haas. Before Ms. Hughes begins, our next speakers will be Speaker number three, please. Maria Zavala, followed by Speaker number 11, Carmen Valdez. We will then have Speaker number four, Craig Burns; Speaker number six, Natalia Blanco; seven, Tracy Alexander; and 51, Olamide Babatund. Ms. Hughes?
Yes, my name is Mary Hughes. I'm the Director of 19th Ward Parents for Special Education and a Board Member for Raise Your Hand. Dr. Jackson, you said you'd like to right the wrongs and make up for the sins of the past with respect to the ISB findings of violations on the part of CPS that necessitated what is essentially a state takeover of the CPS Special Education Department. As a CPS parent and volunteer, special education advocate, I have yet to hear an admission of culpability on the part of CPS leadership. Dr. Jackson and Dr. Keenan, you both were the highest-ranking authorities on education and special education when Forrest Claypool rammed through these illegal practices and procedures that were intentionally designed to cut costs on the backs of our most vulnerable students. The talking points that these were simply mistakes and that you've already taken action is lip service, denial of culpability, and is simply putting frosting on a dung heap. For advocates and stakeholders like myself, who have been figuratively screaming into the void of this Board for almost two years, only to be dismissed, denied, and condescended to, lying about how this inquiry process came about is insulting and is not a way to build trust. Trust is something that I, as a CPS parent, am looking for. One of the areas we hear complaints about that was not covered in the ISB inquiry is the use of temporary nurses to take care of children with daily medical needs not covered, or that is covered by 504 plans. For years, CPS has been using temporary nurses from private agencies, often sending in a rotating crop of untrained nurses who have inadequate time to review student files. This is unsafe, and the service is often unreliable.
Ms. Hughes?
Look to other districts like Las Vegas that do a much better job. They have a staff LPN in every school plus a health clerk. You could have an immediate positive impact by eliminating the nursing contract with RCM and putting a, putting a system in place that provides the opportunity for time with students, getting to know students, and long-term relationships with the adults that are supposed to be caring for them.
Thank you, Ms. Hughes. Our next speaker, please.
Buenos dias, Presidente. Miembros de la Junta Directiva, Doctora Jackson. Mi nombre es María Zavala, y mi hija Valeria es alumna del quinto grado en la escuela primaria Sandra Sineros de Brinter Park. Mi hija mayor se graduó de la preparatoria Victoria Soto el año pasado. Ambas escuelas forman de las escuelas a cero y he estado muy satisfecha y siempre estoy dispuesta a apoyar a las escuelas, ya sea como voluntaria en eventos escolares o venir aquí con otros padres para abogar por una financiación equitativa. Entiendo que la doctora Jackson ha sido defensora de las escuelas charter y valoro el hecho de que tanto ella como la junta entienda la importancia de la calidad de escuelas y de tener opciones. Sineros es una escuela charter y ha sido una muy buena opción para mi hija. Sineros está preparando a mi hija con las herramientas y las habilidades que necesitará para tener éxito en la preparatoria y la universidad. Además del currículo principal, hay una gran variedad de actividades escolares que brindan a los alumnos oportunidades para aprender y crecer dentro y fuera del aula. Sineros también organiza una gran variedad de eventos familiares durante el año escolar para que las familias se conecten con la comunidad escolar. Creo que cada niño en Chicago merece ir a una gran escuela pública y es imposible Creo que cada niño en Chicago merece ir a una gran escuela pública y es importante que los padres tengan opciones. Estoy muy contenta de que pueda elegir a Sineros para mi hija y animo a la junta que continúe brindando su apoyo para las escuelas charter y la oportunidad de tener opciones garantizando una distribución justa y equitativa de fondos.
My name is María Zavala. My daughter Valeria is in the fifth grade at Sandra Sineros Elementary School in Brighton Park. My older daughter graduated from Victoria Soto High School last year. Both schools are part of the Acero School Network, and I have been very pleased with them. I always happy to support the schools, whether it's volunteering at school event or coming like today with our parents to advocate for equitable funding. I know Dr. Jackson has been a supporter of charter schools, and I appreciate that both she and the board understand the importance of school quality and choice. Sineros is a charter school, and it's been a very good option for my daughter. Sineros is helping to equip my daughter with the tools and the skills she will need to succeed in high school and college. In addition to the core curriculum, there are plenty of extracurricular activities that provide opportunities for students to learn and grow outside the classroom as well as in the classroom. Sineros also hosts a variety of family engagement events throughout the school year to connect families with the school community. I believe that every child in Chicago deserves to go to a great public school. And it's important for parents to have a choice. I am very pleased that I was able to choose Sineros for my daughter, and I encourage the board to continue to support for choice and charter schools, ensuring fair and equitable funding for that schools. Okay?
Thank you. Our next speaker, please. Carmen Valdez.
Good morning, President Clark, distinguished board members, and Dr. Jackson. My name is Carmen Valdez, and my children attend Sandra Sineros Elementary School, which is part of the Acero Schools network of charter schools. My son Hector is in seventh grade, my daughter is in first grade, and they're both in honor roll. Thank God. As a parent, I want the best for my children, so I appreciate having a choice regarding where I send my children to school. I'm very satisfied with the quality at, and the culture at Sineros. It is clear that the principal, Mr. Sparks, and the teachers care deeply about the children who attend this school. I also like that we have a parent involvement and that it is very encouraged, encouraged, and they are very welcomed. This is why I am happy to be here to advocate on behalf of Sineros and charter schools. It is why I also traveled down to Springfield last week with the other charter school parents to advocate on behalf of charter schools. We have many very successful charter schools in Chicago. They give parents a choice, which is very important. Many of us can't, can't even afford a private school, but we still want the best for our children, and we appreciate having great options like Sineros right in our community. As you work on finalizing the budget of the coming year, I hope that the board will commit to providing fair and equal funding to charter schools so that they have the resources they need to help our children thrive and succeed. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Valdez. Our next speaker, please.
Hello, my name is Craig Burns. I was born and raised on the South Side of Chicago. I stand to speak for you today as a product of the collaboration between CPS and charter schools, Noble Network of Charter Schools to be specific. I attended and graduated from Gary Comer College Prep. Because of Noble, I was able to expand my intellectual curiosity. I am a person who loves to ask questions, some say too many questions. But at Gary Comer College Prep, teachers love my questions. They always encourage me to know more, ask more, and discover more about any subject that I desire. Noble challenged me to become the best version of myself. A quote that I learned in high school that I stuck, that stuck with me all these years is, "Don't pray for easy lives, pray to be stronger men." Gary Comer made me into a stronger man. Through rigorous curriculum, through rigorous and challenging curriculum, I learned how to smile in the face of adversity. Noble showed me the urgency and importance to take control of my future. Before I attended Comer, I was a grade A procrastinator. But I quickly learned that at Noble, that was not an option. They forced me to dig deep and find, find the man that I needed to be. I learned to not wait around, I learned to not wait around for opportunities and yet actively pursue them. Noble not only helped me get into school, but also supported me throughout my collegiate journey. Noble's investment in my academic and personal success was monumental with my graduation from the University of Illinois at Chicago last May. Without Noble, I couldn't imagine where I would be today. The experiences and opportunities offered to me from Noble are invaluable. I volunteered to speak today to show you a life change by the mission of Noble Network of Charter Schools. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Burns. Our next speaker, please.
Good morning. My name is Natalia Blanco, and I am a Noble Rowner College Prep alumna. I would like to take this moment to talk about my experiences attending a Noble school. When I was in the eighth grade, my mother and I did not know what high school I should attend because we did not like the options that were made available. After extensive research, we found the Noble Network. The atmosphere inside of my high school was completely different than any environment I had ever been in. My expectations were laid, laid out clearly to me on the first day, expectations I still hold myself up to every single day. This was particularly necessary for me because I started freshman year below level. Because of the work of my dedicated teachers, I ended my freshman year on level. There were many after-school clubs and enrichment opportunities at Rowner, including robotics, wilderness, and even a green team. My teachers encouraged me to take several AP courses throughout my time there where I excelled. My senior year, I was matched with a college counselor that went above and beyond to assure that I was receiving the assistance that I needed. She asked me every personality question that she could think of to try to find the right fit for me. Although I had the support of my counselor, I still felt the college was out of reach for me. You see, my parents didn't have the opportunity to go to high school. I was the first in my high school to receive, I was the first in my family to receive a high school diploma, so I didn't see myself at college. But my Noble counselor worked tirelessly to find the right fit for me, find me a place where I could see myself going. And when the time was close and I still didn't have anywhere to go, she actually ended up driving me in her car for three hours to Grand Valley State University. And because of her persistence and belief in me, I can now proudly say that I am a rising senior pursuing my degree in public and nonprofit administration. Thank you. Noble made me realize that I am more than my circumstances. I'm not a statistic. I'm a proud five-foot-two Latina. And I will be walking the stage next year as a first-generation college graduate. Thank you.
As you walk off, I think they would refer to you as a little giant.
Before you proceed, I'd just like to call the next speakers, please. We'll call speaker number five, Joanna Maldonado, speaker number 26, Kaylee Will Kapolsky, speaker number 16, Kimberly Esquivel, speaker number 17, Christopher Chavez, and speaker number nine, Abigail Alvarez, please. Please proceed.
Great. Good morning, everyone. My name is Olamide Babatunde. I'm the director of the Alumni Career Office at Noble Network of Charter Schools. Here to quickly tell you guys a little bit about the work that we do for our 10,300-plus alumni and some of the results we've seen over the past two years. So let me start with some stats. In 2016, we found that only about 41% of our college graduates from Noble, immediately after college, had a full-time job or offered graduate school six months after college. All right, so it's less than half. Pretty poor stat there. In response, we created this career office where we started giving our alums one-on-one career coaching, access to internships in Chicago with Chicago employers, and access to a larger network to build their social capital as well. Happy to say, after a year of doing that work, we were able to raise that number to 67% of our college graduates having either a full-time job or an offer to go to graduate school six months after they graduated from college. So a lot of progress there. And again, it's partly due to some of the support we get from CPS, but also due to the hard work of our alums and the work of our teachers at Noble as well. I do want to have one last plug for you guys. This afternoon at 1:00 PM, we're having our senior send-off. We have about 2,000 seniors at Noble going to college next year, and so we're celebrating them, a little celebration, again at 1:00 PM at Roosevelt. If folks either on the board or in their room want to come, more than welcome to show up. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments.
Before the next speaker, you, you said something that I think is really important. Education serves a lot of purposes. I thought that Representative Michael from the union gave a pretty broad and very comprehensive answer on the importance of education, most of which I agree with. But you also said something I think is really important to reemphasize. At the end of the day, whether it's elementary, high school, and ultimately college, for those that go to college, education should provide at a minimum for people who complete that process to be able to function in society. That includes getting a job. And I'm so pleased to hear that there's a focus on following students after they complete their education to see how, how, how they've actually done in the world and in the work environment. Have we educated them? Have we provided them with tools that allows them to actually get a job? And I often think that that's not followed as closely as it should be. Degrees, certificates, all these things are obviously important because they qualify you. But at the end of the day, the only real measure is, are these people working? Are they able to function? Are they getting a job? Can they take care of their families, take care of themselves, and subsequently their families? So I think this is a very important focus and one of the measures that we don't often look at. I'm digressing, but you, you made me think of so many things. I hear institutions talk about 100% of our kids are going to college. That's important. It's extraordinarily important, and, and they should, they should feel good about that. But the real statistic that I care about is what happens to those kids afterwards? Are they working? Are they gainfully employed? Are they able to take care of themselves? Because that's the real measure of how well our education system is really functioning. And this is at every level, you know, all the way through college or folks that go to our community colleges, getting different types of certificates. If you finish your community college, you either, you ought to be able to go to a four-year institution with transferable credits, or you also, you should have gotten some kind of a certification that allows you to function in the work environment. So when you made reference of that, and very honestly, most people only want to tell good news, but you actually acknowledged that what we, what, what you saw at Noble was a, at least initially, less than half of the kids after finishing college were not employed within some relatively reasonable timeframe, and you're trying to do something about it. So you caught my attention with that because often academics, and I don't mean this as a knock, only focus on, you got in college, everybody's gone. I focus on, what are you doing afterwards? Did we prepare you for life? So I thought your focus is outstanding.
Thank you. Thank you. Our next speaker, please.
Good morning. My name is Joanna Maldonado. I am a CPS graduate. I'm currently a bilingual special education teacher, an LSC member, and was a part of the Advisory Teacher Council last year. So to your point earlier. I am here to speak on behalf of the ISB decision and the proposed budget cuts at Yates, my school. The decision to fund a monitor for three years was the bare minimum, and there is so much more that is needed. Anything short of more resources and more staff and an elected board is not going to be sufficient. I do want to acknowledge that every time I received an email about our upcoming budgets, I was relieved to see on March 23rd, an executive update email that no school will experience budget cuts in the fall, even if enrollment declines. On April 27th, LSC members got another meeting telling us that they are guaranteeing the funding for our schools and will not decrease based on enrollment. On April 27th, an email titled "New Investments in Schools for the Upcoming School Year" where we will see an increase of 2.5%, $10 million for lower enrollment schools, and $14 million for low-income students. So can you imagine how on May 15th at our budget proposal meeting, we were told that we were closing eight positions? Three special education teachers, three CICAs, we're closing library and have to choose between art and music. This is the very reason that one monitor is not enough because there needs to be more funding and there needs to be oversight of our budget as well as an elected school board. Funding for all of our minutes that are still being unmet till this day, a dedicated full-time case manager with special education experience and knowledge to end the revolving door of the people that are managing our cases. We are told next year it will be our AP, who will also be the bilingual coordinator, who will also be an assistant principal, I'm not sure how you do those three jobs at the same time, and whistleblowed protection so that FAP laws are followed to the best interest of students and in the spirit of the law. Curriculum for cluster programs, IEP that are accessible to parents and in Spanish.
Ms. Maldonado?
And that there be a monitor that fixes. I'm here today to also ask to see if there's anyone that I can speak to regarding the budget cuts at our school for next year.
Mrs. De, do you want to respond?
Yeah, so I do, is Heather here? I will connect you. You can talk with me after the meeting. I'm free to talk to you, but I do want to work with our budget director because we have been intentional at looking at schools that were experiencing excessive potential cuts and, you know, providing support for that. So I want to just look at your budget and find out if that was, if it's an oversight, if there's something that we can do, but to determine whether or not those, those cuts are actually happening and if we haven't already put something in place to support the school. So I will follow up. Angela, can you connect and get the contact information for me, please? But we will follow up on that.
Thank you, President Clark. And our next group, please.
Good morning. My name is Kaylee Will Kapolsky. I'm a student at George Washington High School and a member of Student Voice Committee. I would like to start off thanking Latania McDade and Arnie Rivera and their team for acknowledging our underfunded neighborhood school and making us feel like our voices were truly heard. George Washington High School is a Level, Level 1 school, the second-highest IB diploma rate in CPS. 89% of our students live in our neighborhood and are directly supported by our staff who provide students with both the academic rigor and social support for post-secondary success. We're here today to ask you to recognize not only our academic success, success, but to improve our conditions within our community. We want to be considered and made a priority as we have high performance rates within a poor environment. We have a variety of issues in our school regarding student health and other structural issues in which my group will be elaborating on. We thank you for your time, and we hope to come to a compromise, and we highly encourage that you all come to our school to view our conditions firsthand.
Thank you. Our next speaker, please.
Good morning, Board. I'm Kimberly Esquivel. I'm a member of the Student Voice Committee at my school. We come to you today so you hear some of our issues. My fellow classmate Kaylee spoke to you, spoke to the board about Washington's success. I want to bring you the nautical grade behind the scenes. George Washington High School has severe structural issues that is quickly turning into a health risk for students, staff, and administration. Just recently, while juniors were taking the SAT, SAT, there was no heat regulation in classrooms or in the building. Some juniors were left shivering from the cold, others were left sweating. This impacted severely on their performance on the tasks. The big, the big issue we face is that the school, the school roof has been leaking for years and at this point has been falling apart. Roof tiles have been continuously falling, and just recently, a big chunk of the tiles fell into a teacher's desk. Thankfully, she wasn't in the classroom at the time. Another issue was the windows. Ms. Kapolsky, an English teacher, had her hands smashed when a window fell on her. Not only is this a concerning, not only is this concerning, but a lot of these windows are nailed and bolted shut, and some even have tape on them. This is a safety issue and a fire hazard. I'm implying here that during the winter, some of the windows, the latches were broken or they broke and they fell apart. And while through a walkthrough, I tried to open a window to demonstrate, and the window fell on me. So the windows were literally bolted shut, and some have tape over them. So like, you can't open them at all. There's no space in the school since we were told that the Washington High School building was, used to be an elementary school building, and now it's just a permanent high school building. There's no space. There's no room to like, for us to move anything or do anything. We don't want this to become a norm. We don't want this for like, future generations of kids to come into the classroom and be like, this is a norm, like the roof is falling apart. There's, like, we call it a waterfall, and it's just like water coming down the wall. And it's literally a big health issue because some kids slipped on it, and he fell. He could have broken something. We, we just paint over the mold and the water spots to make it like, seem like we have nothing going on. I'm concluding. But I'm, I'm just, I'm, we're here asking for like, help because we cannot, this is a big health issue for us and for the students, for the staff, for everyone who goes to Washington. This is a big, big health issue.
Thank you. And the next speaker, please.
Hello, my name is Chris Chavez, and I want to start off by thanking everybody on the board for giving us the opportunity to speak to you today in true democratic fashion. I think this is something that is really beneficial to us to be able to speak what our problems are at our high school. Starting off, I'm a freshman at George Washington High School, and I am here to try and create the change that past generations of George Washington patriots have wanted to see. And this, this delves into the issues with our building. With our class size, it's the largest they've been in the past, probably a couple decades. It, it's hard to contain the increasing class population it's hard to contain the increasing class population with the deteriorating school. If you ever watched the movie Field of Dreams, you might have heard, if you build it, they will come. Well, our school's falling apart, and more people are coming anyways, so we need some help there. I want to finish off with a couple questions. Should where I live affect the quality of my education? Should where I live affect the quality of where I am educated? Should my financial situation affect the quality of my education? I hope all of these answers you think through and consider, because where I'm at, I'm at a neighborhood high school. I live in the neighborhood, and I, this is the education that I'm given, because honestly, I graduated from Skinner West Elementary, down here in downtown Chicago, which I had to test to get into, and now I'm at my neighborhood high school, and I could tell the difference between a 30- to 40-year-old school and a 3- to 4-year-old school. And it's something that needs to be improved upon, and something that needs to be changed. And we have come here to ask you for our help, or for your help, and we thank you for considering us. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chavez. And the next, the last speaker for the group?
Hello, I'm Abigail Alvarez from George Washington High School, and I just wanted to recap and conclude what my fellow peers have said today to you all. For starters, we've had lots of improvements in our academics and within our sports teams, but our school does not reflect how good of a school it truly is, and it's limiting us to our fullest potential and being a better school for our community. I know we might not get things done right away, especially during my time in Washington, because I'm a junior, and I'm still aware that drastic changes take time and lots of money, but I'm willing to learn more about the logistics of it all. Our physical structure of our school, especially the roof, is beyond repair and has caused many health problems, loss of focus, and so much more issues to our students. So I'm here today to advocate for my school and possibly other neighborhood schools, so that future students are able to have a safe and healthy environment to learn and strive in. We want to mold a new and better norm for our future students. Student voice is so important to be able to advocate for our own communities, schools, and ourselves, that we can change the world, and I hope that we are considered and acknowledged for the processes of future plans that are yet to come. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Alvarez. That concludes the Washington High School group. Mr. President?
May I add a comment here? First and foremost, thank you very much for coming. It's very important to have the student voice in a subject that impacts you on a daily basis, and thank you for the invitation to go and visit. You'll be hearing from myself, and we will be visiting your school. Thank you.
President Clark, may I please address the SBC? So I had just the honor to be in the presence of a few of the members of the SBC, specifically Abigail, who just spoke, and Natalie, as well as with Ms. Rhodey and Mr. Davis. And so I want to say first, thank you for inviting me out to Washington. It was one of the first school visits that I had coming into this role, and I want to echo something that COO Rivera said earlier about the level of professionalism that this group, and I haven't had the opportunity to meet the entire group, but if Abigail and Natalie are any representation of the remainder of the group, I would absolutely agree that the level of professionalism in this group and the courage, the ability to act and use your voice in a responsible and meaningful way, I just want to commend you on that and say thank you for reaching out to me. I also want to say how proud I am of the level of critical consciousness that this group possesses, that I personally did not have at your age, and so that's something that I'm incredibly proud of. Vice President Guzman said earlier about civic engagement, which is a part of our vision, for students to realize civic life, and so you represent that vision for CPS. So thank you so much, and I just want to reiterate to you, because I want you to understand that the power your voice has, because you invited us out, we had an opportunity to see firsthand some of the conditions that you shared today. COO Rivera came back and did the assessment, and so the things you spoke about, Abigail around the roof, those will be addressed. And so I just want you to know that that is a direct result of you using your voice the way that you have for the betterment of your school community. So thank you.
Thank you. Arnie, can you say, did you want to...
Oh, you're going the right way I was going. Go ahead.
Arnie, can you address the Board, and since you are very much aware of this?
Yes, I mean, you know, ultimately, I will confirm everything they said. During the assessment, there's major roof issues, there's issues with the envelope, some parapet, some, a number of masonry items that need to be addressed. And, you know, ultimately, we are putting together a scope, and we're making sure that we put them on the top of the list when we finalize the FY19 capital budget.
So I do have one follow-up for Arnie. You know, so great effort by the team of students here, and you acknowledged them completely in the results they did, but it would be unreasonable to think we could replicate this 600 times. If you had to, for all those buildings, if you had to put where you think your team is now on the knowledge of situations, you know, that could be like Washington's school, if 10 is complete knowledge and one is rudimentary, where do you think your team is now in understanding if there are other schools that are in the same situation that Washington is today?
Sure. You know, and we do do bi-annual assessments on our facilities, I think, you know, the issue that we've dealt with over the last few years is our capital budgets due to our financial situation have been pretty bare bones. You know, over the last few years, we've only had the opportunity of doing 100, 130 of deferred maintenance. I think ultimately, our financial situation is stronger. We've already announced $189 million worth of capital projects for next year, and we're hoping to secure additional access so that we can really start to prioritize, you know, we have over $1.9 billion of critical need, when you're only doing 100 or 150 annually. It's just ultimately, you know, you're picking the worst of the worst, but obviously, there are situations like Washington that need remediation, need to be addressed, and we're hoping that our capital situation should provide us the ability to not only address schools like Washington, but bring schools down the line.
Arnie, I think part of what Mark is getting to, actually, he actually wanted you to rate it on a scale of 1 to 10. I know how difficult that is to do. It's like asking lawyers or accountants to give you a rating on what results you're going to get, and they never really want to do that. But in terms of information, it's clear to me from my discussions with you, Dr. Jackson, and others, that there's a very high awareness of the deficiencies that have been accumulating in our capital budget going back many years. It is, I know, a substantial priority. I won't talk about limited funding, or funds are what they are. Some situations are more dire than others. You're all over this particular situation with George Washington, and I know that it's high on the priority list. And Mark, you're right, when you look at, multiply that 600 times, your real question is, how can you get to all of it? The reality is, you can get to all of it fast enough, but some situations are worse than others.
Can I ask you a question? I just wanted to know, how do TIF funds play a role in, or do they, in any of these improvements? And if they do, have they gone to their older persons? I'm just not sure. That's why I'm asking.
Any opportunity that increases our capital funding allows us to address more and more of these issues faster. I don't know if I see, if our chief financial officer, chief financial executive has anything to add to this.
Well, in general, TIF, in general, TIF funding is more used on the operating side, and we use, we issue capital bonds to help with our deferred maintenance. And as I stated in the past, we didn't have as much capital, but where we've become financially stronger, we're looking to increase our capital funding, which will help Arnie to be able to reduce our deferred.
We don't want to, thank you very much. Without trying to get into sophisticated financial issues, you have the operating side, you have the capital side. The operating side, we have an operating budget of about just under $6 billion. That's to pay salaries, all the stuff that goes directly into the schools. You have a separate budget that deals with your capital program, improving schools, capital maintenance, putting in your roofs, just big stuff. Those capital dollars have been under pressure for years. We simply haven't had enough money. We could not borrow enough money to address our capital issues, because we were financially too weak. One of the things that has taken place over the last year is our financial situation has substantially improved, not 100%, but substantially. It allows our financial folks to go into the marketplace and borrow, issue bonds, to borrow money, more money, to address the capital needs. But as Mark clearly points out, you're one school that has acute needs that need to be addressed immediately, there's no issue there, but he asked a legitimate question, what about the other 600? He used the word deferred maintenance, which I think you're aware of, because you seem to be a very informed group of young people. Deferred maintenance goes back many, many years, and it's a function of simply not having enough money coming into the school system. There's no excuse for it, and it has to be remedied. You need to be aware that, we are aware that as a Board, that our financial folks have been able to raise more money in the capital market, because we're financially stronger. But frankly, Mark's question is very legitimate. You're standing before us as one school, you need to have your issues addressed, but he's asking, well, the 600 others, and what are you doing for those? And where are you, and knowing how bad your situation is, or how much progress you're making? And that's an area where the Board has asked for much more information. Your immediate concerns are exactly where they are, should be. They are right in the forefront of our chief operating officer, our CEO, and to the extent possible, and as fast as possible, they will be addressed. Thank you very much. Did anyone want to speak?
Thank you, Mr. President.
Did any other Board member have a comment? Anyone to cut anybody off? Okay, thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. So the next speakers, Mr. President, will be Speaker Number 10, Uvaldo Aguilar, followed by Speaker Number 12, Natasha Erskine, Speaker 38, Adam Dowd. We will then have Speaker 14, Greg White, and Speaker 15, Marian Lulande.
Buenos dias a todos. Mi nombre es Uvaldo Aguilar. Puedo hablar inglés, pero prefiero hablar en español. ¿Por qué? Tal vez se preguntarán ustedes por qué y cómo se siente como hablo español. Es porque así me han tratado en CPS en todas las reuniones de mi hijo con la escuela.
My name is Uvaldo Aguilar. I can speak English, but they am choosing to speak Spanish. You, maybe you're asking why? Because this is the way they treat me in every meeting at the school.
Soy padre de tres hijos. De mis tres hijos, el mayor desgraciadamente está enfermo, tiene un síndrome llamado Dravet. Es una enfermedad intratable y que atenta contra su vida.
I have three children. The older is a, has a Dravet syndrome, right? Dravet syndrome is a kind of syndrome that don't have any way of being treated.
Sin embargo, CPS no le ha importado esto. CPS ha manipulado toda queja y toda demanda que hemos interpuesto. Se nos ha discriminado por ser latinos y por la condición médica de mi hijo.
However, it seems to me that CPS doesn't care about this. I feel that I've been discriminated, me and my son, because we are latinos, and they don't pay attention to any of my requests or complaints.
Sin embargo, son expertos en quitar servicios y ser jueces de mi familia, quitándole los servicios de speech, quitando los servicios de terapia ocupacional y física.
However, it seems to me that CPS is an expert on canceling services to me and to my family. For instance, speech services, OT and PT, and other services that my son needs, I was receiving.
Estoy seguro que todo niño que está a cargo de CPS es un ser humano, por lo cual merece respeto, merece dignidad, y ustedes como institución tienen la obligación de brindar las herramientas para que estos niños tengan una mejor calidad de vida.
I'm sure that my son and all the children needing special attention, special needs, are human beings, and they deserve your attention, your respect, and you have to act accordingly, treating them with respect and listening to our complaints and needs.
Si como institución educativa, no tomamos en cuenta y no somos inclusivos con este tipo de individuos o niños que son seres humanos, ¿qué tipo de sociedad están creando ustedes?
If an education institution doesn't take care of these needs on those children, what kind of society are we creating this?
Se supone que debemos cuidar a las personas más vulnerables, y al contrario de hacer esto, estamos juzgándole y quitándole los servicios que merecen.
Supposedly, we have to protect vulnerable people, like our children, my children, and instead, you are cutting and canceling services to them.
Por lo cual exijo que los niños con discapacidad no sean discriminados en base a su raza o condición médica.
I demand that children with different capacities don't be discriminated by race or medical condition, as we are, you are doing with my son.
Exijo, y los estoy viendo a la cara, y se los estoy diciendo así, como fui a la escuela, que los servicios de mi hijo sean reinstuidos inmediatamente y no que sean retenidos por más de un año. Mi hijo tiene un año de no recibir terapia física ni ocupacional.
I demand, again, looking to your eyes, that the services canceled to my son be restored, that we don't have to wait another year, that was happening now, that my son has been waiting for services that he needs, and every day, that every individual in this condition needs, but you don't provide.
Mr. Aguilar, excuse me, but can you please conclude?
Yes. So, mi demanda para CPS es que los fondos sean retirados y que sean manejados por una institución ajena a CPS, porque obviamente esto no está funcionando y nuestros hijos merecen dignidad, respeto, y servicios. Gracias.
So my demand, finally, is that the funds dedicated to special needs be managed by an outside institution, right? Because the proof is that CPS is not working, is not doing what it has to do with this fund.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Our next speaker, please.
My name is Natasha. I'm the Deputy Coordinator for Veterans for Peace Chicago. I was born and raised in Inglewood. I'm a CPS alum, and now I'm a proud King College Prep parent. My daughter's a freshman and an honor roll student. Along with my team, I helped lead the effort to replace the entire local school council at King College Prep. I look forward to working with you all for the 2018-20 school year. I wish I had a lot of time to talk about the perils of militarization in lieu of education. I'm confident that this Board should be aware of the details, because my colleagues have been here over the years, kind of explaining that. So I feel deeply in my position and my experience to share with you the personal aspects that you may not know, when you lead 90% of the current enrolled, or excuse me, over 9,000 students currently enrolled in JROTC or militarized training, 90% of them being Black and Latino. I can tell you from my experience that Chicago being the most militarized school system in the nation, with also the largest militarized recruitment centers in the nation somehow, that when I always bumped into people from Chicago, it never dawned on me why. Because it starts right here. I was recruited, and I'm telling you that because I'm a product of JROTC, and then across 20 years in the Air Force, my military record speaks for itself. My experience and my decorations tell you that I participated in a program that didn't serve my moral and my personal being well. So when you're sitting here and you're saying, while some people have a narrow view of their military experience, that is not the norm that's currently happening today. I had some printouts for you, but I have printer issues, so I'll definitely deliver those via email, because I think it's important for you to know that there are currently people that are dealing with institutional racism, and I'm not nervous about this, but you know, I get excited when I'm talking about this stuff, because I think it's important to talk about, right? And it also takes me back to the times where I experienced this type of dysfunction. So I just want to, as I close, I just really want you all to understand that there is a people factor to this, to the recruitment tools of expanding militarized training in lieu of education, and I am asking you all to invite us to the table, so that veterans who have seen this war and are struggling to survive can help you understand why it's not a good idea. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Erskine. Our next speaker, please.
Hello, my name is Adam Dowd. Thank you for allowing me to speak here today. I'm a person of privilege. I grew up in a middle-class, white household in one of the best public schools in Minnesota. I'm a seminarian at the Lutheran School of Theology in Chicago. I'm also a seven-year active-duty Army veteran. I'm a father of two, and I was economically drafted into the military. For the sake of my children and all the children in CPS, I am morally opposed to ROTC in their schools. The idea of... am morally opposed to ROTC in their schools. The idea of going to war was normalized for me at a very young age. I remember going to music class and watching the World Trade Centers collapse, and then making a flipbook about it in art. In high school, I remember doing push-ups to earn keychains and water bottles from recruiters. I've spent the majority of my life in school, and the majority of my life, the United States has been fighting wars across the globe. The military and school, the military in school, and the military as school have dominated my life. When my family couldn't afford to college tuition after the 2001.com bust, I didn't give a second thought to joining the Army. I liked adventures, and I like being outdoors. My previous experiences with the military and school had taught me that they're pretty much the same thing, right? Being in Reserve Officer Training Corps and my time on active-duty armies, I spent 12 years putting on a uniform. If you're wondering how that worked out for me, I am now a member of an organization called Veterans for Peace. If you're not familiar with Veterans for Peace, we are a global organized military of veterans and allies, whose collective efforts are to build a culture of peace by using our voices and experiences. We inform the public of the true causes of war and their enormous costs. Our obligation is to heal the wounds of war. Our Chicago chapter realizes the dangers of normalizing violence and militarization of our children, specifically our Black and Brown children, who are most targeted by recruiters. I'm here today as a seminarian, a veteran, and a father, but most importantly, I'm here as a person who is morally bound to liberation of all peoples. Violence is ever-present for our children. Many of them know the cost of it and the effects of it too much. I urge you to stop normalizing militarization and violence by removing ROTC from Chicago public schools, and instead find other opportunities like choir, so they don't have to rely on war and violence as a resolution strategy.
Thank you. Our next speaker, please. Greg White.
Good morning. I'm Greg White, the CEO of Learn Charter School Network. We operate seven schools in the city of Chicago, in some of the most challenging communities in the South and West Side. I'm here to thank you and make a request. One, I want to thank the board for approving the material modification last month, which allows us to better manage our enrollment, given the change in demographics in North Lawn, Dale East Garfield Park. So thank you. Dr. Jackson, thank you very much for releasing the budget early this year. I've never seen a budget so early. It is very, very helpful to us. It allows us to plan to hire, to purchase, and better serve our students. So thank you very much. And finally, to both Dr. Jackson and the board, thank you for the 2.5% plan increase in funding. It's the same promise you made to the neighborhood schools. So thank you for the fair treatment.
Very much appreciated.
Here's my request. One, there be no change in the 2.5% increase in funding. We want the same promise of certainty made to neighborhood schools. We are afraid of a mid-year cut. It's been discussed as a possibility of a 3.5% cut mid-year. We're planning 2.5, we take a 3.5, that's a net 6% change possibility. At 6%, that's about $600 per student. We serve 3,300 students. That would result in about a $2 million cut to our budget. That would be devastating. We would lose teachers, social workers, parents. We cannot afford to absorb a $2 million change in funding. We really hope that you would consider giving us certainty in funding. We need certainty in funding, the same certainty you promised to neighborhood schools. We hope that all our students, charter schools, students also, we need stability and predictability. So please, 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 remember, we cannot sustain a mid-year cut.
Thank you, Mr. White. As the next speaker approaches the podium, I'll call Speaker number 18, Rosalina Miramontes, followed by Speaker 20, Sarah Hernandez. Then we'll have Speaker 22, David Robinson, followed by Speaker 24, Elizabeth Haring. Thank you. Please state your name.
My name is Mary Ann Lallande. As a community member in the Uptown neighborhood, I would like to thank the Board of Education for the upcoming change in leadership at Uplift High School. For months, Uptown residents have attempted to volunteer with and support Uplift students, but have encountered obstacles when interacting with the current administration. These obstacles included a persistent lack of responsiveness to emails, stalled CPS volunteer paperwork, and rejections of offers to volunteer at after-school events. I estimate that there are up to 50 community members who have expressed a desire to engage with the students at Uplift between November 2017 and today, whose offers were neglected. Now the community will at last have the opportunity to mobilize our eager volunteers. The three pillars of Uplift High School are social justice, college preparation, and community involvement. Under new leadership, we will finally be able to realize the third pillar of Uplift's mission statement by building a strong relationship between the Uptown and Uplift communities. In my capacity as president of the Lakeside Neighbors Association, I have had the fortune to meet a number of Uplift High School parents and teachers, and I admire their commitment and dedication to the school. We are eager to demonstrate what we can accomplish together by helping with mentoring, tutoring, job preparation, and assistance with recruitment. It is important to members of our community that we have access to a high-quality high school that reflects the diverse history of Uptown. Uplift is a predominantly African-American high school, and over 95% of the students receive free or reduced lunch. I cannot emphasize enough how committed the Uptown community is to partnering with the Uplift administration, teachers, and students in their pursuit of a successful and equitable learning environment. We can only meet this goal if the school is fully resourced, including dedicated teachers for every subject and grade level, and providing access to honors and AP courses. Again, I would like to thank the Board of Education for their responsiveness to our concerns. I firmly believe
Ms. Lallande.
that Uplift High School can be a place that reflects the greatest qualities of Uptown, and I look forward to building a positive and lasting relationship with the new leadership.
Thank you. Thank you for your comments. Our next speaker, please.
Buenos dias a todos. Mi nombre es Rosalina Miramontes, y vengo de la escuela George Washington Elementary School. Y estoy aquí porque mi hijo David Miramontes se ha visto afectado psicológica y académicamente este año escolar. Al principio del año, él empezó con muy buen promedio. Igual tengo las calificaciones de kindergarten, de pre-k, cuando él estaba muy bien, y ha ido bajando notablemente. En muchas ocasiones, me han llamado de la oficina que le lleve ropa a mi hijo porque se ha urinado. Y yo le preguntaba a la maestra por qué pasa esto, y ella me decía, pues habla con el director, no, habla con su doctor. Yo sabía que esto no es físico, porque él nunca tiene accidentes en casa, y nunca lo había tenido en kindergarten, en pre-k. Al principio, mi hijo llegaba bien feliz de la escuela. Él solo hacía su tarea, y conforme fue avanzando el tiempo, él ya llegaba triste, nervioso, y con su cuello mojado, y sus mangas mojadas, porque se estuvo mordiendo. Eso me indicaba que estaba nervioso. Yo le preguntaba, ¿tienes problemas con tus amigos? Él solo me decía, no. Entonces, en abril 11, él me dijo, mami, yo no quiero ir a la escuela. Entonces, le dije, tienes que decirme por qué. Y él me dice, es que mi maestra es muy estricta, me deja sin recreo, no me deja ir al baño, solo cuando van mis amigos, dos veces al día, al principio y al final. Y le digo, ¿por qué te deja sin recreo? Dice, es que me enfado cuando termino mi tarea y juego con mi lápiz, o me siento sobre mi pie. Y después dice, sí, everyone, David no va a ir al recreo porque está jugando, y eso a mí me hace sentir avergonzado. El día 12 de abril, el día siguiente, fui a hablar con la consejera, y ella me dijo, con la señora Anderson, ella me dijo que iba a hablar con el principal para hacer una reunión. El día 18 de abril fue la reunión. Estuvo presente la maestra, Miss Valdivia. Estuvo presente mi esposo, el principal, y la señora Anderson. En esa reunión buscábamos soluciones, y la señora Valdivia se mostraba molesta e indiferente cada vez que yo hablaba. Incluso, ella es bilingüe, y todos éramos bilingues, y ella se negó a hablar español. Eso me faltó. El niño ya no quiere que hable con la maestra, no quiere que hable con el director, porque dice que la maestra está enojada y le está bajando puntos en su tarea. Entonces, también, lo limita de field trips, lo limita de actividades con sus amigos, como pyjama party, pyjama day, porque está muy enojada que fui a hablar con el director. Estoy aquí para pedirles por favor. Yo soy voluntaria de la escuela, he ido en diferentes field trips, he sido chaperón. Va a haber un field trip. Ella dijo, no va a ir. El director dijo, el niño va a ir porque es educacional, y la maestra no quiere que yo asista. El director me dijo, tú puedes ir en tu carro, y eres bienvenida, pero la maestra dice que no soy bienvenida al grupo, y a mí me da mucha tristeza.
Señora Miramontes, por favor. Gracias.
Let's summarize here. My name is Rosalina Miramontes. I am from George Washington Elementary School. I'm here because of my son, David Miramontes. He's been affected academically and psychologically by the teacher, Mrs. Valdivia. This year, for instance, my son began with good grades. He was happy, but instead of being a progress, he's been all the contrary. In several occasions, I've been called from the office to bring to the school extra clothing because my son urinated himself. I knew that this is something not physical. This is something related to his condition, his state of mind, his unhappy. Used to be a guy as a child coming happy from school. Now he's nervous, he's sad. Sometimes his uniform is really, is wet. It's showing that he's been like chewing the uniform, biting the collar, because he's really unhappy. For instance, on April 11, David told me that she doesn't want to go to the school anymore. Why, I ask, is because my teacher, she's very strict. She's cutting my recess. She doesn't allow me to go to recess. She doesn't like me, how I sit. She doesn't like me, how I play with my utensils, and minimal details. And always, she said that in front of the whole class, so I feel embarrassed because of that. She doesn't let the kid also go to the bathroom, right? And when he needs, he has to wait for the whole class to go together.
I think the essence is clear. Is, are we talking a case of bullying here?
Bullying?
What are we actually alleging here?
The maestra?
The teacher.
Yeah, she considers this as a kind of bullying from the teacher.
The teacher.
Okay. I just wanted to be clear there.
The teacher doesn't speak Spanish to her, even though she speaks Spanish. The teacher doesn't feel comfortable when she's in presence, denies her the chance to go to field trips with the kid. So that's a complaint.
This is something that you would want to look into.
Absolutely. And just a quick question. Have you gone beyond the school leadership and engaged with the network at all?
He's a little bit of a red.
Okay. So, okay. So we'll set something up to have a deeper conversation and maybe have a meeting, an administrative conference.
You weren't aware of this prior to this. This has not come. Why don't we, why don't we do this? Can you assign someone to get her issues?
Yes.
So that they get addressed immediately?
So Ms. Buckles is going to connect with the, with the family now to just get your contact information.
I have a question. Es posible que mi hijo tenga escuela en casa y que sea evaluado por otra maestra?
Is it possible to homeschool my child?
Lo que queda del año, por qué no?
The rest of the year?
Well, we want to first, we don't want any, if the claims that you are making are substantiated, I don't think that homeschool is the answer. We want to make sure that your school is a place that, that your son can continue to go to, to learn and grow, right? So we want to address the issue. So I'm just asking that you give us an opportunity to investigate it and address your concerns. And we'll do that. It'll be a priority. We'll do it immediately. How long has this been going on?
How much time has it been going on?
Dos meses después que empezó el año.
Two months after the beginning of the school year.
And have you talked to your principal?
Hablé con mi principal el día 12 de abril, porque fue cuando el niño me platicó todo lo que está pasando.
April 12.
Okay. We will, we will follow up, because we want to resolve it.
Yeah. Chief McDade, it sounds like there was also a conference with the teacher, the principal, the parents, et cetera, and that they were trying to find solutions, but it sounds like it wasn't successful, so.
So we'll intervene on your behalf at this point. We don't want...
She's asking for a, for a permit so she can go to the field trip with the kid. That's something that the teacher...
So can we, so can we get all of this information? Yep, and we'll follow up and make this a priority. So you'll, we'll have, you'll have a contact, someone will contact you by tomorrow at the latest. Okay.
Thank you.
Okay. So that was the first communication to the network. Okay. Thank you, Ms. Buckles.
Gracias.
Thank you. Our next speaker, please.
Good afternoon. I'm from George Washington. Thank you again. I'm a little nervous right now. Dr. Jackson, coming out of South Chicago, I was very pleasured, like she said, Ms. Buckle, that yesterday I spoke with their team, Network, the chief, Network 13, we're going to be resolving some issues, some changes in the fall. But I have still some issues regarding the inspection. I'm, to today's date, we don't have received any confirmation about the inspection from Mr. Rivera. No emails. That's what the principal has been saying. No feedback from the LSC. My daughter been sick for a week because she have a swollen tonsil, and I've been in the hospital, and her grades is falling apart because of that. She's an A and B in IEP. And I had to speak with a teacher, and she's going to resolve the issue. But this is affecting her health. And I have two kids, and I work in the medical field. Majority of those kids have asthma and allergies. Like George Washington High School, that school was meant to be for elementary, and our school was meant to be pre-k to second grader to third grader. And our school is overcrowded. The carpet's not been removed for years. We have staff, we're students from that school, and they were saying, the carpet's not been removed, all have been the same. So we need help from that. I need feedback from that. I emailed Melanie Rush, and she said, I'm still waiting for the results back. Like, that's been two months already. I need feedback from that. I'm just exhausted. I'm everywhere, making sure I'm preparing advocate from everywhere. Like, her concern also about bullying. Every time I report to the principal, now I see teachers are getting away from me. They don't want to talk to me. Like, they don't see I'm trying to help. They see like, like, I'm a bad guy. Again, I already explained that to you last time, and we have staff misbehaving this way. Staff who are Hispanic, like behaving this way with her, not speaking Spanish, and bullying parents, bullying teachers, staff also. We need to, we need to resolve this issue regarding bullying and facility. That's my concern from today.
Thank you, Ms. Hernandez.
Good afternoon. Name is David Robinson. I'm Communications and Organizing Director for a group called Manufacturing Renaissance. Thank you, President Clark, esteemed members of the board, and Dr. Jackson for allowing us a few moments. Hopefully, in two minutes here, I'm going to try to give you a bit of history and then talk a bit about where I think things can go with respect to our program. There are 22,000 vacant manufacturing jobs right now in the Chicagoland area. Stones throw away from us. We're told that manufacturing's dirty, dumb, dark, dangerous, maybe even dying. Not true. 97% of the industry are small, precision manufacturing companies that are all around us. We pass them every day, and they employ anywhere from 400 and less people, and they pay $72,000 to $84,000 a year, including benefits, with a ninth-grade math education, and you can also have a felony record. We said, well, that sounds like an opportunity. My founder, Dan Swinney, went out and studied best practices throughout Europe, because we figured if we could connect high-quality education and high skill to manufacturers, we could create opportunity. We have done that. For the past 10 years, we operate a program called Manufacturing Connect. Some of you have the information there. And our program now has been named the national best practice by the Century Foundation. It is also considered the best program in the city of Chicago for high skills training. And we are pleased to say that we work closely with CPS in our three locations, Bowen, Prosser, and our flagship at Austin High School. But what we're finding is that our manufacturers, and we work with over 100 of them, can't get enough of these trained kids. So we encourage, as the budget cycle picks up, and Harold Washington once told me personally, he said, David, budget is policy.
Mr. Robinson.
And I'll say this. I think we can do more to expand the opportunities for our kids to have these programs available to them.
Thank you, Mr. Robinson.
Yes, sir.
I hear you say that there are 20,000 jobs unfilled.
Yes, sir.
In manufacturing.
Yes, sir.
And they're unfilled because... And they're unfilled because?
The skills required these days, you know, the old days, I'm old enough, I don't know if you're old enough, President, to remember when steel mills and so on were predominant throughout our communities. Those are heavy, hard jobs.
I'm way too young for that.
Yeah, I figured, yeah. What has happened is the big guys moved offshore for low-skill labor. And what was left are high-precision, smaller manufacturers. But in order to do the high-precision work, you need higher set of skills.
Well, I don't know if you heard my comments earlier.
I did.
My unique views on what education ought to deliver. I'm all for as many young people who want to and are able to be successful, go to college and get a college degree and go on and get advanced degrees and go on to make wonderful lives for themselves. I'm also fully supportive of young people who decide that they don't want, they want to leave and go get a job, for all types of reasons, and they ought to have the skill sets to do that. I'm always astounded when I hear these kind of numbers of jobs that are going unfilled in a situation where we have all these other problems in the city that would be substantially reduced if people simply could get a paycheck.
Absolutely.
So I could not, I can more strongly endorse what your efforts are and what you're trying to do. There has to be a better way to close the gap for those young people who choose to go a different route and maybe not necessarily want to go the four-year college route. As desirable as I personally find, that I understand some people want to go a different direction, and there shouldn't be 20,000 unfilled manufacturing jobs when people need jobs.
Absolutely. And if I may just say, we support both, the college route and the career route. And we guarantee our students, when we pick them up in ninth grade, that when they graduate, they'll walk off the stage with a job offer from a manufacturer, college acceptance offer on the other hand. Because both are crucial for success in our community.
Absolutely. And lastly, I'm particularly gratified that young people who've gotten in trouble, who, whatever the reasons, have, well, they've had an experience with the criminal justice system. Sometimes that makes it very, very hard to get meaningful employment. And it sounds like you said that that would not necessarily be a barrier.
Not at all, sir. In fact, one of my favorite stories is one of our young men, Terrence Wilson, was involved in, how should we say, street trade. And he did it inside Austin College and Career Academy. He's one of our 2014 graduates. We convinced him to get the industry certifications. And he did so, but he was still busy doing his thing, has two felonies. When he finally graduated, we said, okay. He went off and tried to continue that lifestyle, came back to us and said, Mr. Robinson, can I do something with all these certifications you guys said? Said, let's go. We walked him to our manufacturing partners, and after the 10th time, an organization called Dudik and Bach, they make springs on West Roosevelt Road, they said, we'll take a chance on you. Fast forward, Mr. Terrence Wilson now is in his third year of Tuland apprenticeship training, and he will make $120,000 a year next year.
John, without going into any detail, you know, we've had meetings with groups that have been just so disappointed that people they represent have not been getting jobs they think they should get. And it sounds like this category of job opportunities that are well-paying would be suitable. The question is training. And as part of what you're suggesting is that the curriculum that we provide, while it does, obviously is geared for higher education, are you suggesting that we need to also focus and have an opportunity to train people so that they can go right into the labor force?
I am exactly suggesting that, Mr. President. In fact, I'm saying, I encourage you guys to come visit our shop so you can actually kick the tires and see what it is we do, meet some of the young people. You mentioned something earlier in your comments. We train them right in-house on how to operate the machinery. But a lot of times, the conditions of our communities, the way the kids are being raised, they don't have the proper skill sets to keep a job. We have 100% placement, but we found, much like someone mentioned earlier, that they have trouble keeping the job because they're not job-ready in that regard. So we have complete wraparound. We follow them into college, we follow them into the job. We have what's called a Young Manufacturers Association of former employees or current employees that are of that age, and they're peer support for our young people. So our success rates are off the charts on this.
Dr. Jackson, is there an opportunity here that perhaps has been overlooked?
Yeah, I was going to say, I think Allen's team is already engaged.
I think we met with you yesterday, as a matter of fact. So we're happy to work with CPS. They've been great. Our Principal Harper Reynolds over at Austin has been amazing. And what it takes, though, is, I think, a little bit more of the top-down approach in order to make this really a wider opportunity for young people throughout the community.
You're obviously correct. I'm assuming that that 20,000, there's a 20,000 manufacturing jobs in the greater Chicago area.
Greater Chicago area.
That are going unfilled.
Correct. Projected to go to 50,000 in two years.
Yeah. There has to be a better way to match the skills that are necessary to get those jobs and programs like your own that I think you'll try to provide a comprehensive approach to make sure not only the kids get them, that they can actually, our young people get them, they can actually stay there, they can actually maintain those jobs.
Absolutely.
But if you're already working with the appropriate people inside of CPS, that's a huge first step. But I'm actually encouraging you, John, do you know the gentleman, John?
Yes.
Okay, because you bring people to me who are very dissatisfied with their members of their organizations not getting the kinds of benefits that you just addressed. 20,000, I've heard numbers like this constantly. It's always hard to know what's real and what's not. But there are so many people, young people, in this city that finished high school and are looking for jobs.
Yes.
And that just shouldn't be if you have the kind of gap that you're talking about.
That's right.
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. President. As the next speaker approaches the podium, I'll call Speaker 25, Cherie Davis, followed by Speaker 31, Clarence Carson, and Speaker 36, Eli Washington. Thank you. Please state your name.
Thank you. Good afternoon, President Clark, Chief McDade, esteemed members of the board, and Dr. Jackson. My name is Beth Herring. I'm a parent and local school council member at Bret Hart Elementary. And throughout my time coming to speak to the board, I usually have a baby strapped to my chest or a toddler playing at my feet, and you'll notice I'm solo today. So CPS success story. My older two children are happily attending our neighborhood school. They're happy and learning a ton, and we're thrilled. My youngest is ready to start pre-K in CPS, which is why I'm here to speak to you today. Due to a very abrupt and not well-communicated change in CPS preschool next year, the pre-K program at Hart has been cut from.
I'm sorry, what school?
Bret Hart. Bret Hart. The pre-K program will be switching to full day, which is a wonderful thing for many families. What that means, however, is we will have, instead of 40 slots available, we'll have 20 slots available. Although that's bad news for my family because we won't likely get a spot, that's okay. That's not why I'm here to talk to you today. This change is a negative change for our school. Our school is a small school. We're a neighborhood school, and we struggle to recruit families from our neighborhood. The pre-K program is one way that we get them in. And we have a wonderful pre-K program that's very well-regarded. We bring them in, and many families choose to stay for kindergarten and beyond. And with student-based budgeting, you know how critical that is that we have and retain our students. I'm asking you to restore the number of 40 slots in pre-K at Bret Hart by giving us an additional full-day classroom. This will allow us to continue our recruitment. It will allow us to serve all of the students who need pre-K most. And it will also allow a few spots for families in the neighborhood to come and try out our school, and we believe that that's the best thing. Dr. Jackson, I know I've heard you speak both in your role as Network Nine Chief and in your current role about the importance of supporting neighborhood schools and integrating our schools. Our school is not well-integrated, and.
Ms. Herring?
Thank you. This is one way we can do that. In my final moment, the process for pre-K application also needs help. The Chicago Early Learning website is not currently updated. All of the spots are still showing as half-days. Parents don't know what they're applying for. They don't know how much it might cost. I urge you to fix that immediately. Thank you.
President Clark, may I please address the parent? So I just want to acknowledge a couple of things. I know that you attended the town hall, so thank you so much for attending the town hall, and you had an opportunity to stop by the early childhood education table and speak with the representatives there. I'm not sure how much they share with you, but we are considering potentially a second full-day classroom at Hart if the applications show a need. So right now, with the one full day, there are 11 students that are returning, and there are 16 new applicants. So if the applicants actually increase to 20, we would be considering a second full-day classroom. So I just want to make you aware of that, that that's something we have been working with the school. I know that you're on the LSC, and I know that you had some conversations about this during the town hall. So that's not something that is off the table. We just want to make sure that the number of applicants, because even when families apply, they don't always attend, we don't want to open a second full day that then is under-enrolled. So just letting you know that if the need is there, we are willing to accommodate the need and have been working with your school and your administration around that.
Absolutely. Thank you. And I will say that fixing that website and fixing the information that the folks at the hotline have will go a long way towards boosting those applications. Since having that conversation with Leslie McKinley, which I know you've got a new focus on customer service, kudos to her. She did a great job. Since that, I've started blasting out, hey, we've got full-day pre-K. But I've had parents contact me and say, well, it still says half-day on the website. Is that what I'm supposed to apply for? So there's a lot of confusion and frustration, and I'm afraid we're going to lose, like we did last year in CPS overall, I'm afraid we're going to lose a lot of potential students. This is parents and students' first entry into CPS.
Let me interject, stop before, is our website outdated?
There's a website, and they are working through to change over, because when the conversion was made, we had to release the actual application, launch the application earlier because of the complaints about it being late. And so these allocations came on later. They are working to rectify the situation with the website, so that should be fixed momentarily.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. President. Our next speakers, please. As they approach the podium, after they address the board, will be followed by Speaker 27, Latonya Jackson, 29, Latoya Jackson, and 28, Anthony Haynes. Thank you.
Hi, everyone. My name is Clarence Carson. I am the treasurer at PTA, I'm sorry, treasurer of the PTA at McDade Classical School. I've spoken in prior months as well about an important topic for us, which is expanding McDade School for seventh and eighth grade, as well as the facilities improvements and enhancements to the school as well. I also recall in prior month's meetings, it was a pretty important topic as well, the facility enhancements, the kind of the blitzes and everything else as well. I definitely want to say thank you all for hearing us come out each of these prior months, as well as taking some action to come out to our school. Initially, we had a site visit from CEO Rivera, and also followed up with an inspector, inspection as well of the school, too. You know, one of the big things now, I guess we're seeing, because we had students who've tested either into McDade or, I guess, other schools now, we've definitely seen a lot of parents who are not choosing McDade for the reason it doesn't go up to seventh and eighth grade, for their kindergarten class, and even some students who are currently there now who are testing away from McDade because it doesn't go up to eighth grade. We really want to save this gym and kind of grow that gym of a school as much as possible. And you'll also hear from other people as well today, from parents and LSC members, as well as other community members as well. I guess I was curious to know today, has there been any more decision about McDade, I guess, Poe and also Decatur, if they'll be expanding? And also timeframes of that, if it does come to that? And also improvements, enhancements for McDade? Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker, please.
Good afternoon. Mr. Clark, Dr. Jackson, Mr. Goodman, Ms. Furlong, Ms. Garza, Dr. Haynes, and Ms. Ward. My name is Eli Washington. I am the chairman of the Chesterfield Community Council, and McDade is located in our community. It is with great expectation that we stand in support of the seventh and eighth-grade expansion for McDade School. McDade is a stellar school and deserves to retain the student talent for the entire grammar school experience. Being a former student at McDade in the 70s, I did not receive the same level of academic support and committed faculty in my seventh and eighth-grade experience. Our children deserve stability. McDade is a jewel in our community, and we want nothing but the best for the students, parents, and faculty and community. Thank you for this opportunity to address you.
Thank you, Mr. Washington. And our next speaker, please.
My name is Cherie Davis. I am a parent and a future LSC member for the upcoming 2018, 2020 year at McDade Classical. And as a product of CPS, I know the stress of testing into our selective enrollment schools. And for our younger kids, they don't understand the pressure that their parents experience from kindergarten to six and then on to ninth grade. If McDade could have the opportunity to have a seventh and eighth-grade program, that would alleviate stress for parents and for students, as well as to allow CPS to have some other opportunities for students to have the selective enrollment experience. As Mr. Clarence Carson just mentioned, McDade is a jewel. It's a well-kept secret. We'd like for McDade to be out and known more so in terms of having more diversity, having, excuse me, an opportunity to enhance our reputation throughout the city. Again, we really would encourage the board strongly to go forward with the seventh and eighth-grade expansion. I know that other classical schools, other gifted schools have the entire gamut of K through eight, and I never could understand why we have just three schools, McDade, Poe, and Decatur, that only go from K through six, and we have no guarantee that our children will be accepted into an academic center. And it is a very stressful experience. We've had parents whose students did not get into academic centers, and they're left to either go to the neighborhood school. Or they have to go to private school. And it is, it's a special student that goes to a selective enrollment school, and then to put them into a regular neighborhood school, it just does not bode well for them. So please, 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 I know you have other immediate pressing issues, but this is a pressing issue for us at McDade Classical. Thank you for your time today.
Thank you, Ms. Davis. Our next speaker, please.
Is this on the same subject?
No, we're moving on to the next group.
Any response, Dr. Jackson, to this? It's been a school that's gone up to sixth grade for a long time, and obviously, these parents and local community leaders believe that that is hurting the school. Can you address it now, or do you want to have someone talk to them later?
I mean, we've said in a few meetings that this is a big priority for us. I think right now, we don't have a funding source for any capital projects. We are seeking that as we look to create our capital budget for FY19. And we've continued to engage the McDade, also the Decatur and Poe community around this. I wish I had a better answer today, but I don't want to promise something without a funding source. But we know that the desire is there. We also agree that the need is there. But we have to wait and see when a funding source is identified, the amount of money we have, and balance that with all of the needs. You heard about schools like Washington, et cetera, today. There are so many needs that we're trying to balance throughout the district. So this is something that I know Arnie has been working on, and we continue to engage the group and better understand what's happening there. And we want to be supportive of, you know, all of our schools. And we want to be supportive of these schools that have demonstrated excellence. But I don't want to overpromise something without knowing what our resources are. Yes.
It was only, I have to say that, I mean, the school itself turns out these very little students that go to around the city. But a lot of the things they're lacking, of course, are science classrooms. They don't have a science classroom. They don't really have art classroom. They don't really have a music room itself. Labor rooms out of the school itself is utilized for academic purposes. I mean, I said it before, that our gym caf auditorium is a room that's used for everything, but there's no other space to meet it. So it's, I'm glad that we have students now that made it to the school, are going through the schools, kind of a different experience, and hopefully, when they come out, they go to the highest-ranking schools in the city as well. And some of them do, a lot of them do, but it's just too rocky for road. They shouldn't have to push so hard, have so much supplemental work by the parents to get them there.
I think the important issue here is that your concerns have been heard, both by the CEO and by the board. And frankly, you got an honest response. And that response being, I can't solve the problem today. I'm aware of it. I'm not ignoring it. And right now, I think that's truly where we are. It's never good to tell people what they want to hear just so they go away and nothing happens. It's much better and frankly, more honest to tell people, I know the problem. I'm looking at the problem. I don't have the answer today. Okay?
Yep.
Thank you, Mr. President. Our next speaker, please. Please state your name.
My name is Latonya Jackson. Okay, I'm here. I'm desperately reaching out to you because my family has been mishandled. Okay, I'm here, I'm desperately reaching out to you because my family has been mishandled by CPS, Bronzeville Scholastic Institute, and by Network 9. Please investigate the brutal attack on my family, which was committed while they were attempting to attend a scheduled parent conference, which was all captured on Bronzeville Scholastic Institute's security camera, as well as on police and the body and dash cam. We also have police reports, doctors' visits, reports, and photos. On April 25th, this was mob action when approximately 15 adults attacked my family on school grounds. There was an altercation on April 24th in the school, where my grandson was attacked by students, and this was also captured on video. This was premeditated aggravated physical assault on both accounts. There is two CPS students, Brian and Armani, and the parent, my daughter, Latoya Jackson, who was brutally attacked in front of the school, in front of a police officer, Tony Pruitt, who arrested the parent, who caused my daughter head trauma by striking her in the head with a padlock, causing her to lose vision in her right eye, as she watched 15 adults beat my grandson to the ground. We have a court for battery on March, I'm sorry, on May 30th against the parent that struck my daughter. We also will be seeking legal actions if we're not made whole. The purpose that I'm here for is to see if network's safety transfer revision can be addressed. The selective enrollment neighborhood school onlys are being excluded from the safety transfer. We asked if the student can be transferred to Kenwood, which is less than one mile from my home and one mile from my daughter's school. We were told that no, they cannot go to Kenwood. We then requested if they can be homebound or online, I will conclude. We're also just seeking right now closure, healing, justice change, and we just want to see something come out of this better than exploiting this in the media. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Jackson.
From a security perspective, are you aware of these issues? And are we addressing them?
So, we are aware of the safety issue, and so her child is still at the current school, and safety plans have been in place for that. We're working with the network chief and their office to discuss the safety transfer request that the parent has made, and that's kind of where that's sitting right now.
Is there physical evidence of the altercation between apparently adults and children?
The parent altercation, I'm very aware of, and that is separate from the safety issue that she's expressed for her child. And so we're handling both of them.
Can I just ask a question? So this happened April 25th?
Yes.
When did you request the safety transfer?
The same exact day. We were on, the principal called while I was taking my daughter to the hospital, and she said, oh my God, we're looking at the video right now. And so can you come back to the school so we can file a report? So my daughter stated, I have a police report, I'm not coming back to that school. So when we left the hospital later on that night, the school had sent her a message asking, again, can you come back and have another meeting? So of course, we're fearing for our life. So again, we're saying, can we be transferred? And the whole conversation from Network 9 is, Kenwood is a selective enrollment, it's not about Kenwood, it's about safety. Then he can be homebound. And they're constantly saying, oh, well, we have to follow protocol, we have to meet, they had a peace circle, because my grandson was out of school for 15 days.
Jaden, you know what my question is, right?
Yeah, so, so safety transfers have been offered, several safety transfers. She's not content, and I respect that, not happy with the choices that were made, and so that's what's being-
Okay, I don't want to get too much into our personal, that's, yes, you've addressed it to the board, we've heard your complaints, we're going to follow up. One aspect is with our security people, the other aspects will be with the appropriate people at CPS. Thank you very much.
Well, thank you for your time. Here's your birthday coming up, Dr. Jackson.
Thank you, Mr. President. So our next speaker will be Speaker number 49, please.
Dr. Buckles.
Angela Butler, followed by Speaker number 30, Christopher Gallinato, Speaker 34, Sarah Dennis, 37, Mark Cozy.
Good afternoon, everyone. Thank you for letting us speak. This is my son, James Williams. I've been here plenty of times. The last board meeting I was at, I left a publication for you all, three copies with Susan here, which my daughter created, as far as she's a wonderful artist. But we've been here since 2016, and we're having the same reoccurring issues. We started off as a homeless family that was discriminated against at Skinner West. My son, James, here graduated from that, and he still does not have an exiting IEP or an IEP to enter into high school. And I have three children, I have James, who's special needs, and I have two general ed students that were honor students when they went into Skinner West, but they were discriminated against. And the last time we met, you asked for Ms. Chow and everyone to meet with me, but we didn't have a chance to resolve or even hear any of the issues that were happening to all my other children. They kind of just brushed it off. So since I've been coming for the past two years, I've been brushed off and just ignored, there's no resolution. My children still have not, they've just been being pacified and patronized. They still have not been returned back into school, but for some reason, Skinner is sending grades, and my children are not even there. So it's as if ghosts are sitting in the seats, but they're being graded. So they still have not had any meeting with me to resolve this issue. We tried to do a due process, which was not done still. So we're still trying to resolve, because as a single mom, trying to homeschool three children, it worked at first, but situations change, so it's kind of rough trying to do all of this on my own. And I keep coming here respectfully, and keep getting ignored, and they're just pushing us aside. Every time we go outside those doors, we're told that someone's going to help us. They have an outside meeting of where we just patronize, and they just say whatever, and there's no more communication. And I have to do all of this on my own, constantly contacting, trying to get to the correct people. And my complaints and everything just keep being sent off. I have copies of the publication, I have copies of the complaint, I also have copies of ISB showing me that there were funds that during the time we were homeless, that were applied for on behalf of my family. None of those funds were used to help or support any of my family members. They said it was a, I'm almost done, Ms. Burke, and this is an agreement with the board to reimburse, that we never received the reimbursement that they have on paper. So for some reason, all these funds, TIF funds and all that were being applied during the time we were homeless, none of it was used towards me and my family. My daughter has anxiety from going to Skinner. I have a younger son who was being fondled, they never did a proper investigation with us. We even have him on recording when they interviewed him, Ms. Clark, and he told her the name of the little boy that was touching on him a number of times. She continued on to next year and put him in the same classroom with the same little boy. We didn't have a meeting with the parents or anything. So they have violated, I don't even feel like a parent when I go to these schools.
Let me stop you. Is your son in school now, you're saying he is not?
He is not. They never did an IEP, they never, they just sent them to whatever they claimed the closest school was, which is not in our neighborhood.
All right. Are you aware of this?
I'm not aware of your situation, but I'm going to have you meet with Michelle Burgess, our, one of our parent involvement specialists, so we can kind of dig into what's going on and really kind of resolve some of your issues that you're seeing around, especially the IEP pieces of it, okay? We'll meet with you.
Thank you.
I also think, given her, ma'am, I also think, given the allegations that there is no resolution, we should also provide the board with a written response and update from this case. So I don't want it to just be a meeting. We should make sure that the board is made aware of the content of the meeting and supports offered, or what the proposed resolution is, so that the next time you come, they at least have a frame of reference.
Absolutely.
Yeah. Yes, you could please leave it with Susan.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Dr. Jackson, President Clark, and Chicago Board of Education. My name is Chris Gallinato, and I am here representing the Chicago branch of HWPL. We are an international peace organization-
Let me stop you for a second. Can I stop you?
I'm sorry.
I wanted to make sure the other situation was, okay, please continue.
I represent the Chicago branch of HWPL. We are an international peace organization. We are registered members of the United Nations Economic and Social Council with consultative status, and I'm here to introduce the peace curriculum in recognition that gun violence is infiltrating schools at an alarming rate, and that all forms of aggression have been progressing in our school systems for a very long time. I myself am a product of the Chicago Public School system, I'm very proud to have gone to Chicago Public School. I was born and raised on the west side of Chicago, living in Humboldt Park and in the Austin neighborhood. And so knowing the breadth and lasting effects of aggression, whether it's gun violence or physical violence, that something needs to be done. And with this, our involvement with HWPL and Chicago is the introduction of a peace curriculum. This peace curriculum is, has been implemented globally. There are more than 110 schools in over 50 countries around the world, including the Philippines, Kosovo, India, and several nations in Africa. Now, it's going to take more than two minutes and a day to discuss what exactly this peace curriculum is. So I'm here personally to invite the board to a peace conference that is coming to Chicago on June 7th.
Mr. Gallinato, can you please conclude?
Thank you. It's going to be the International Law Peace Committee will be here, including the chairman of HWPL, to discuss further how it is that Chicago, its structure in education, the community, parents and students can develop a curriculum that works, as we do this all around the world. That'll help stave off, including one of our initiatives is elimination of gun violence in schools. But also, one more thing, in order for us to create a culture of peace, we have to address the existence of the promotion of a culture of war. And that also includes reconsidering-
Mr. Gallinato, thank you.
-removing junior ROTC.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next speaker, please.
You deserve a bathroom break and a lunch break. My name is Dr. Sarah Dennis, adjunct faculty at Loyola University, and previously Erickson Institute, Roosevelt University, and NYU, concerned citizen, proud graduate of CPS. Thank you for allowing the public to speak. I will begin with a land acknowledgement. Let us remember that all CPS schools sit on indigenous land. Chicago is the ancestral homeland of the people of the Council of Three Fires, the Ojibwe, the Potawatomi, the Odawa, as well as the Miami, Ho-Chunk, Winnebago, and Sauk. Today, there are more than 30,000 native people in Chicago. Let's reflect on how CPS has benefited from the dispossession of native land, and how we can work to address that history. Like with the Reparations I mandated curriculum, thank you for that. I'm here to request that CPS mandate curriculum for accurate history of colonization and genocide of native people and theft of land, that also acknowledges current native communities today. Please rename Columbus Day as Indigenous Peoples' Day, like Evanston and many other cities and states have done. We must honor the 30,000 native people here and begin to right the harm caused by the settler colonists who came before us in Chicago. In addition, you could mandate teaching history of Black women leaders in Chicago using the book Lifted as They Climbed by Marion Kaba and Essence McDowell. Thank you for creating the new position of Chief Equity Officer for CPS schools. I hope this person will have a team of people, because there's a lot of work to be done. Specifically, there are six points on the handout that I provided, assess equity in CPS. So from the data from Special Ed in 2016, 2017, over $1 million was given to the top 10 whitest schools in Chicago, and $0 for the top 10 blackest schools. School closing data, everybody knows, vast majority of schools are Black teachers and Black students were closed, their course offerings are inequitable, AP classes, language classes, advanced sciences and math and art, vast inequities in CPS. Stop the attack on Black teachers. There used to be 50% Black teachers in 1989, we're down to 22%. Eliminate the overreliance on standardized testing, it's insanely wasteful of fund, it's inaccurate, biased, not useful data for teachers, it's damaging to children's health, and it's not developmentally appropriate in kindergarten through third grade, and has to stop. End zero tolerance policies of punitive inhumane criminalization of children.
Ms. Dennis.
Halt school privatization. Only 1 in 5 charter schools outperforms traditional schools. Charter schools are stealing taxpayer money and harming our children, they need to be closed, and invest in sustainable community schools. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Dennis. Our next speaker, please, Mark Cozy.
Hi, thank you. My name is Mark Cozy. On April 26th, I learned that the principal of Pritzker Elementary, Dr. Reese, had a new restroom policy, and without alerting parents, the restrooms were now locked with deadbolts. These deadbolts require a key, and when locked, do not allow a person to exit from the inside. They're in direct violation of the City of Chicago Building Code 18-4-870. As a result, students have been occasionally locked inside the restrooms. When I met with Dr. Reese on April 27th, she told me the restrooms were locked because of feces being smeared on the walls, and they would remain locked from now on. She said she was aware that some students had been accidentally locked inside the restrooms. I told her she may have solved one problem, but created a more dangerous one, and the locks were not safe. And Dr. Reese said to me, and I quote, "I know it's not safe." Yet she refused to unlock them. Dr. Reese is a school principal, knowingly put the students in danger, and knowingly violated building code. When Chief Safety and Security Officer was alerted to this, she responded, "There should be no locks installed on the restrooms." And I quote, "Even if they're unlocked, they are strictly prohibited." The restrooms have been unlocked now for the past three weeks, but the deadbolts are still on the doors, the keys are still in the classrooms. I'm here today to ask that they get removed immediately, there's only two screws, that's all it takes. I'd also like to request that further steps are taken to make sure that Dr. Reese does not put others, to put her students in other dangerous situations. I don't know what else she may have chosen to do that might be dangerous in that school. If I had an employee do something like this, I would fire them immediately. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Our next group, Mr. President, will be Speaker 39, Natasha Dunn, followed by Speaker 40, Ari Conyers, 41, Jas Dunn, and 52, Jonathan Williams. Natasha Dunn, last call.
Hi, my name is Natasha Dunn, and I am a parent at King College Preparatory High School. And I'm here today because a group of us came here in April, and unfortunately, I stand alone, because most of the parents were unable to make it today, and a few of our students had to leave to go back to school, which is really one of the main reasons why I love the school. Our students are very committed to their education and their learning and their environment. And over the past couple of weeks, they have participated in peaceful protests against our rogue LSC's decision to remove our principal, and now to replace him with a principal from an underperforming school that's slated to close in Inglewood. Our students and, or, and parents are very displeased with their selection, and we are deeply concerned. So in April, when we came, we came to express our concern, how the LSC has been operating. Also, we have talked about the negative impact LSC has had on our entire school community. We requested that the board help us and open an investigation on the LSC to see if they have been following policies and procedures as related to their duties under the law. We have reason to believe that several of our LSC members have not completed the required LSC training in the timeframe allotted. And according to your policy and state law, LSC members must complete nine modules of training within six months of office, or they will be removed from the LSC by the Board of Education. We firmly believe that this principal selection process that the LSC has taken us through has devastated our school community and has had an effect on our school. Also, we believe that we have reasonable fear that the academic progress, financial stability and integrity, and the best interest of our students are at stake-
Ms. Dennis.
...as a result of their lack of training. So the reason why I'm here today is to urge the board to enforce their policy and to not co-sign on Betty, Melanie Betty Seaver's four-year contract that the LSC has granted her to have, or want her to have. We believe that they're not trained. We've come to you several times, reaching out because we need that you guys intervene, and we believe that they have not completed their training, and they, therefore, they should not be allowed to-
Thank you, Ms. Dennis.
...give her a contract. So can we get some kind of mediation in that aspect? Thank you.
Let me interject. I know you've come to the board before. This is your local LSC elected by the community. You refer to him as rogue. I didn't understand that, because these are your elected officials.
So many of us parents who have organized since we found out about our LSC's rogue behavior are freshman and sophomore parents. Majority of us have not elected these people, in fact. And we also have unceded every last one of them. I am a newly-elected parent.
Yeah, let me, let me interject. I understand that, but the LSC that's there now is empowered because they were elected by the people in the community. You may not like their action, but I think they're within their authority, whether- You may not like their action, but I think they're within their authority, whether you like it or not. I'm not agreeing or disagreeing with you. I didn't understand your use of the word rogue because now you got a new LSC. When did you take office?
We take office in July. But the reason why they're rogue is because they never adhere to like the representation of the community. They did not speak to us. They didn't include the parents, the school, the teachers nor the students in their decision making process. We've even polled the entire school community. We did research and everything and found that majority of the school community, including parents, wanted to retain the principal. And they've worked diligently against the school community. In fact, we believe them awarding a four-year contract to a principal from a school that's underperforming and on the verge of closing is a direct attack to our school's stability. I'm sorry. Thank you.
Look, I want to go back to the basics here.
Yes.
If they're lawfully elected and they apparently were, you have been duly elected. Do you take office in July?
We take office in July. Unfortunately, the problem we have is that they've made the decision and we want the board to intervene.
You didn't like the decision.
Right.
But they were made by a duly elected LSC. You don't like their decision. I understand that. You disagree with it.
We disagree with them and we also...
You will be a newly elected LSC board.
Right.
Capable of hiring a principal of your choice when you are empowered. I don't want to debate you. I just want to be clear. I understand...
We won't be able to hire the principal. She will have a four-year contract, but the problem is that they were not trained. They did not receive the training. And according to the policy, they should not have been allowed to continue with their process. So I'm here to enforce the board's policy and to see if the board can, you know, step up and deal with that particular situation.
I appreciate your perspective. I appreciate you don't like what the other elected LSC did. It's hard getting around the fact that in fact, they were elected.
I don't like the fact that they haven't received their training within the timeframe allotted by the board. That's my problem I have is that every LSC, if you're taking the role as a LSC member, you should be, you should go through the training process. And according to your policy, I'm just here to see if you're going to enforce your policy. That's all.
Yeah, I think that once you and this new LSC board is empowered, to the extent that you think there are things that should be done differently and within your legal authority, that's exactly what you'll do. Thank you very much.
So you guys are not going to enforce your policy?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next speaker, please. Speaker 42, Chris Behrend.
We will continue to organize.
Followed by Speaker 43 Bobby Townsend, Speaker 45 Mehir Garud, 46 Joseph Williams, 47 Catherine Please state your name.
Hi, my name is Chris Behrend. I am the Chair of the Charter Division of the Chicago Teachers Union. I've been here before. I was president of Chicago Acts, which is a separate local for charter teachers. We've now merged. And all Chicago teachers are speaking with one voice. And so I'm here today, I just want to make a few comments about the new funding formula. I thought it was great that the state moved to an evidence-based formula. It's unfortunate that Chicago's still funding with a student-based budgeting formula. It undermines our attempts to build equity in the system, which I know is Dr. Jackson's one of her main motivations, which is commendable. After the new funding formula was like apportioned within CPS, there was an extra $37 million that went to charter schools, which is great. However, even before that time, according to CPS's own data, charter schools were being funded equitably. So additional $37 million is like an extra $688 per student. I thought it was unfair that that money didn't go, extra money didn't also go to district classrooms, which had been, had seen really terrible cuts. But I've been out to, we represent 34 schools and I don't know, I haven't been able to determine where that money's gone. Nobody's able to, like, the money has gone to the charters. It certainly hasn't gone to anyone's salary. It's not going to extra resources in the classroom. It's not going to staffing. And our biggest concern is special education staffing. Students are not getting their minutes met. Most of our schools still have shortages of special ed staff. It's a real concern. We've lined up 11 of our 12 contracts to negotiate together within the charter section of the CTU. With this extra money in the system right there, we really want, we want staffing. We want equal pay for equal work. And we want the resources that we need.
Mr. Behrend.
I hope that this board would think about how to make sure that that money's not just going into extra administration and blow. It should be getting to the classroom, to teachers, classrooms, teaching there. So I encourage you to...
Thank you.
Hold the charter operators accountable. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Behrend. Our next speaker, please.
Hi, my name is Bobby Townsend. Thank you. I'm from Diet Rec Center, which was, have not been destroyed. It's due to Park District. I don't know if you guys know the history of Walter Diet, but I was glad that the school that represented Pilgrim Black, who is it, Dr.?
Dorsey. Dorsey.
Thank you. But my thing is, we need the Rec Center open to the community. It was promised in 1999 when Paul Valles, Jerry Chico and Michael Scott gave the Rec Center to the school, which is predominantly middle school. But now we're working together in the neighborhood. We would like Diet Rec Center to be open to the community, mainly the pool. We got two pools, Ellis Park and the Art and Rec Center on 35th Street. We need another pool because you have a lot of senior buildings in the area and they want to, in the summertime, the pools, the outdoor pools, it's too cold for arthritis and what have you. So we've met with the principal, she's agreed to it. We met with Mike Kelly. He only wants to give us three lifeguards, but for the pool to be operated for the community, we need a lifeguard. And Tom Wong, the engineer, say we need an engineer on duty while the pool is operated. So can you please ask Mike Kelly to give us a security? And Tom, he's willing to work the hours or what have you. And as you can see, I was taught by our president to organize and he said, "Make some noise." So you've heard of the Black Panther? You've heard of the Pink Panther? Well, I'm representing the Gray Panther.
Thank you. Yes, we will follow up with Principal McLeod and also the Park District and just get a sense, just get a handle on where this situation is.
Also, I had the okay from Joyce Gallagher from Department of Aging.
Okay.
And also, my alderman, Sophia King.
Yes, ma'am.
Oh, thank you. God bless.
Thank you. If you could just leave Dr. Buckles or Mr. Esim your information, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. President. Our next speaker, please. Please state your name.
Hey, good afternoon to the board, President Clark, Dr. Jackson. My name is Mehir Garud. I'm a teacher, Institute of Health Sciences, Career Academy in Pilsen. I'm also the elected trustee for CTU Acts, which is the charter division of the CTU. First, I'm glad to hear of Dr. Jackson, your commitment to special ed, like you mentioned. History has showed, though, that CPS has not gotten it right when it comes to educating children with special needs. And we support the appointment of the independent monitor to oversee special education. However, there's even less accountability in the charter division, in the charter sector for students. And these are students that I see and teach every single day in the classroom. And this is one concern I have, especially when charters have gotten a bump in funding, the 2.5%. And as bad as the special ed cuts are that require an independent monitor for CPS, there's even less transparency and accountability and oversight in the charter, for charter schools, for charter school students. And we're doing our part to protect our students and school resources by doing a collective campaign of 11 of the charter networks. And I want to make sure that CPS and the board will hold, do their part as well. We want to make sure that these resources get into our classrooms and to serve our Teachers and parents of students at charter schools need to hold operators accountable and deserve the same access to the sped services. CPS coordinates and finds most, if not all, of the sped services provided charter schools and contract schools. And we want to make sure that those students get the same protections as district schools, you know, equal pay, equal funding, equal education. We talked about separate but equal earlier, and I think this is a case where we can all work together collaboratively to make this, to make this right.
Thank you, Mr. Garud.
Thank you very much.
Our next speaker, please, Joseph Williams. Moving on to the next speaker, Catherine Jones. Mr. President, we will then have Speaker number 50, please, Angela Williams, and the last speaker, Speaker 53, George Blakemore. Last call for Angela Williams. Mr. Blakemore?
I'm not new attending these meetings, but for five years I haven't been here. Nothing has changed. I'm advocating for you to do a study of the negative effect that a sanctuary city has on Chicago Public Schools. The illegal immigrants coming in and using the public school, even here when you are making your presentation, you have a two minutes. Somebody come up and not speaking English language, that's two minutes. And then another person to translate it, that's another two. That's four minutes. And then you'll tell a person that can speak English, your two minutes is up when you have used four minutes for these other people. The negative effect that it has on your budget, your operating budget and your capital budget. Also, when it comes to your lunchrooms and feeding and all of that, you don't have the money. A few moments ago, I heard the lady, Mrs. Jackson, say, "We don't have the funding." But you have funding to open your doors to illegal immigrants' children, people that don't belong here. And you don't teach civics. Civics mean obey the law. Legal is within the law. Illegal is breaking the law. In a few minutes, you'll say, "Mr. Blakemore, your two minutes is up." That means that I have exceeded to teach our children civics, to obey our immigration and naturalization laws, to go by the law. I'm appalled to set a set one of these words and listen at this shenanigan that's going, still going on with, and then they say they're firing Black teachers.
Mr. Blakemore?
So Mr. Blakemore has exceeded his minutes, but I saw how courteous you were to these others. You must grant me the same courtesy as a legal citizen in representing men and women who was enslaved. And if you got any good service job and operation, money and budget, target to them. We need sanctuary, our Black community, and I'm advocating for it. And if Black leadership is silent, that's on them. That's why I came here, to speak on this issue. And I will come again and call it, you wasn't saying, the miseducation of the Black man and the Black child. And it's still going on today. It's separate and unequal, what went on back 50 years ago. Racism and it's targeted, I'm not using the word color, but it's targeted specifically to Blacks.
Thank you, Mr. Blakemore.
Racism in its worst still prevailed at this Board of Education. And gracious to you, señor or senorita or whoever, this is ridiculous, what is still going on here with your budget, your operating fund, and you waste all in abuse. You stole so much money. You all up here was here when they were stealing this money.
Thank you, George.
And you still here. My name is Mr. Blakemore.
Thank you, George.
My name is Mr. Blakemore.
Well, thank you, Mr. Blakemore. Two things, as Mr. Blakemore exits the stage. One, Chicago is a sanctuary city and should feel good about that. 47% of the students at the Chicago Public Schools are Hispanic and we should be both proud and feel good about that. And the fact that in fact, when a person speaks and they're speaking Spanish, we allow time for the interpreter to strike me as the appropriate thing to do. And George, I do require you, Mr. Blakemore, I do require you, I call him George because I see him in another forum all the time and I thought we had gotten a closer relationship. But in any event, Mr. Blakemore, I do require everyone here to be respectful and not demonstrate disrespect. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. President, this does conclude public participation.
Board members, are any comments?
Yeah. I have one, we heard a couple of times today about oversight and accountability for special ed provisions at charter schools. And I just wanted to make sure that the next time we get a special ed briefing at the board, that we just cover what the plan is for that oversight, what charter schools are responsible for, what the district is responsible for, what are the processes in place to ensure that that is happening?
Okay. And I just...
Did you want to respond?
No, I was just going to say, okay. I made a note of that earlier, so.
All right.
And I would also like, excuse me, to ask about the comment regarding that $37 million set aside to the charter community, if I heard it properly.
Yeah. Just to clarify, those funds were given directly to the charter management organization. So I think what the gentleman was asking for is oversight into how they disseminate those dollars. And we do collect that information and we're happy to provide that information to the board.
And did you have...
Yeah, I just, for seven years, the LSCs and the parents, I don't know if we can do anything about it. I've worked with Willie for at least three or four years, have been so dysfunctional at King High School. And I think the children are paying the price. And I don't know, I'm just asking, Janice or Latine, do you all know anything we could do at that school? Because this has been going on, as I said, for seven years. They asked me to go out there, Matt, they get a principal, they're just dysfunctional.
When you say dysfunctional, you're referring...
What I mean is they, the parents, they fight, they argue with each other. They select a principal, then they don't want the principal they select, then they don't want the LSC they selected. Willie can explain it more. You've been dealing with it. You want to say why I say it's dysfunctional?
Yeah, it is dysfunctional because every two years, they have a different, a different LSC. The parents and community members, they select a different LSC. And the LSC have the authority to move according to, you know, the law on whatever they think is the most appropriate. But yes, we have been working directly in this particular case with the chief office and the new, the new principal that is going to come in place in order to organize a series of meetings to create the transition with this principal and the new principal. We are going to start meeting with the staff, with the students and also with the parents in the community to create the part of the transition. This LSC that is taking place is very, they're very united, they're all on the same page. And I'm pretty sure that they are going to be working directly with this. The issue is that many parents are planning to take kids, you know, out of the school and that's what we are concerned about.
Willie, we heard earlier that perhaps it was an issue of training? Is that part of, is that part of it or is it...
That's not part of it.
It sounds like it's the community...
No, it is not. She was misinformed and have been providing the proof to them all that there are only two members that have not taken a couple of modules, that's it. But in order for them to go to principal selection, they took the principal selection training, which is a mandatory one.
Thank you. I think generally...
President Clark, just one other thing I wanted to add to that is that the Law Department, the safety team, as well as LSC relations, did support the school community through the process, which was a very tense process. And so I know that the last speaker, Ms. Dunn, was upset about the outcome, but I do want to make sure that it's on public record that CPS did manage this process, but also allow the LSC their authority to act and the outcome is such, as it's been stated earlier today. But as Willie just pointed out, our concern moving forward is how do we rebuild in this school? I think there's an opportunity there. There's going to be a new LSC and a new principal. And so hopefully, the adults and the people in leadership roles in the school will set the right example and bring this community, the school community, back together.
President Clark, I just want to say, my concern is even before this administration, this has been the same conversation now. This is not new. And Gail was just saying the same thing, you know, so... So I just want to know what we're going to do different, if there's anything we can do different, because they selected LSC before. It was done correctly, they were trained, then they fell out wanting to get rid of the principal. You know, I mean, this has been repeated, at least three principals, I know of.
The only comment I can make to that, Dr. Hines, is that the process of electing LSC members is a public process, they're voted in by the community, and then, you know, it reflects, at least at that point in time, the will of the people. That will may change from time to time, and that's reflected in different LSC members coming into power, and they can exercise their legal authority. You know, the, there's not a real easy answer to this. I don't know why one community or one, one, one school has experienced, you have the history, the ongoing issues that apparently have taken place, but frankly, the community is the one that selects the LSC members, and they select people who I assume are there to discharge duties in the sense, in the manner that the community wants. If that, if those results change, or if opinions change, then when you elect a new LSC, you apparently get people in to reflect whatever the current thought process is. They have the authority to select a principal, they simply do, and.
President Clark, if I may, I, you know, I very much agree with what you're saying, and the way you explained it is the way that the law reads. In my data, when I was running principal training and programming, LSCs often made the correct judgment for hiring principals. Sometimes, in very few instances, that didn't work, and that occasionally happens. But I think we've got a liaison here, and our role is going to be how to make graceful transitions happen when these situations occur.
Thank you very much, Board Member Ward. If there are no other questions or comments, and I see none, is there, this actually will conclude our public participation session. So before we go into executive session, well, actually, we've already covered that, and there are no other questions, so I need a motion, Dr. Hines.
I move for passage a motion number 18-0523-MO1 and the commencement of a closed session to cover matters permitted under Section 2C of the Open Meetings Act, subsections 1, 2, 5, 6, 8, 10, 11, and 21, as specified in the motion.
I second the motion.
Thank you. I'll proceed with a real call. Member Furlong?
Yes.
Member Garza?
Yes.
Vice President Guzman?
Yes.
Member Dr. Hines?
Yes.
Member Ward?
Yes.
And President Clark?
Yes.
Six I's, zero N's.
Okay, the meeting will go into closed session. The meeting of the Board of Education is reconvened. Madam Secretary, please proceed.
Thank you, Mr. President. I will start with closed session items from the General Counsel, and I will begin with council retentions for new and continued. These items do require a vote. The first report, the law firm Schiff-Harden LLP for new, and then continued retention for the following three, the law firm Borkin and Skahel LTD, the third report, the law firm Jackson Lewis PC, and the fourth report, the law firm of Riley Safer Homes and Kinsella LLP. Mr. President, these items do require a vote.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second?
I second the motion.
Thank you. I'll proceed with a real call. Member Furlong?
Yes.
Member Garza?
Yes.
Vice President Guzman?
Yes.
Member Dr. Hines?
Yes.
Member Ward?
Yes.
And President Clark?
Yes.
Six I's, zero N's. I will continue with settlements, and these items do require a vote. The first report is the workers' compensation payment for luntum settlement for Dale Sajak, case numbers 08WZ050329 and 08WC051159. The second report is the workers' compensation payment for luntum settlement for Carland Williams, case number 10WC015561. The third report is the workers' compensation payment for luntum settlement for Marie Dennison, case number 17WC018679. The fourth report is workers' compensation payment for luntum settlement for Phyllis Kimmel, case numbers 12WC039263, 16WC022396, and 16WC022397. The fifth report is the workers' compensation payment for luntum settlement for Maria Gallegos Ortega, case number 16WC8164. The sixth report is the workers' compensation payment for luntum settlement for Catherine Powell, case numbers 12WC24360 and 15WC13801. The seventh report is approved settlement regarding Edward Kristovic. The eighth report is property tax appeal refund authorized settlement for Northwestern Memorial Hospital for tax years 2012 through 2013. And for the record, I would like to note an abstention for Board Member Furlong on this item. Mr. President, these items do require a vote.
If there are no objections from my fellow board members, please apply the last favorable roll call vote with the noted abstention.
Thank you, Mr. President. I will continue with items from the chief executive officer and proceed with warning resolutions. These items do require a vote. The first report is the warning resolution, Lisa Posenovic, tenure teacher assigned to Gale Elementary Community Academy. The second report, warning resolution, Sherry Sagatz, tenure teacher assigned to Higgins Elementary Community Academy. And the third report, warning resolution, Leanne Thornton, tenure teacher assigned to Emil G. Hirsch Metropolitan High School. And Mr. President, these items do require a vote.
If there are no objections from my fellow board members, please apply the last favorable roll call vote.
Thank you, Mr. President. And I will continue with items from the board. These items do require a vote. The first report is the resolution by the Board of Education of the City of Chicago regarding the dismissal of Dorothy Crowley, tenure teacher assigned to Ida B. Wells Preparatory Elementary School. The second report is the resolution by the Board of Education of the City of Chicago regarding the dismissal of Kurt Kerrigan, tenure teacher assigned to John F. Kennedy High School. And the third report is the resolution by the Board of Education of the City of Chicago regarding the dismissal of Lisa Posenovic, tenure teacher assigned to Gale Elementary Community Academy. And Mr. President, for the record, I would like to note that this report also adopts a supplemental opinion and order under separate cover. I will continue with the fourth report, resolution by the Board of Education of the City of Chicago regarding the dismissal of Jorge Perez, tenure teacher assigned to Carl Scherz High School. The fifth report is the resolution approving the chief executive officer's recommendation to dismiss educational support personnel. And the sixth report is the resolution approving the chief executive officer's recommendation to dismiss probationary-appointed teachers. And Mr. President, for the record, I would like to note that on May 18, 2018, the board members and the office of the board received the CEO's recommendation to dismiss probationary-appointed teachers pursuant to Board Rule 4-1 and 105 ILCS 5/34-84. Her recommendation included the names of the teachers affected and the reasons, and she also noted that the teachers affected will be notified of their dismissal after adoption of the resolution. The eighth report is the resolution to approve the chief executive officer's recommendation to dismiss non-renewed probationary-appointed teachers at the end of the 2017-2018 school year. And Mr. President, for the record, I would like to note that on May 18, 2018, the board members and the office of the board received the CEO's recommendation to dismiss probationary-appointed teachers pursuant to Board Rule 4-7B2A and 105 ILCS 5/34-84. Her recommendation included the names of the teachers affected and the reasons, and she also noted that the teachers affected will be notified of their dismissal after adoption of the resolution. And the ninth report, Mr. President, is the resolution authorizing the honorable termination of regularly certified and appointed teachers. And Mr. President, these items do require a vote.
If there are no objections from my fellow board members, please apply the last favorable roll call vote.
Thank you, Mr. President. And I believe Vice President Guzman has a motion, please.
Yes, I move that the board adopt the minutes of the closed session meeting of April 25, 2018 pursuant to Section 2.06 of the Open Meetings Act. Board members reviewed these minutes and determined that the need for confidentiality exists. Therefore, the minutes of the closed session meeting held on April 25, 2018 shall be maintained as confidential and not available for public inspection.
Is there a second?
I second the motion.
Thank you. I'll proceed with a real call. Member Furlong?
Yes.
Member Garza?
Yes.
Vice President Guzman?
Yes.
Member Dr. Hines?
Yes.
Member Ward?
Yes.
And President Clark?
Yes.
Six I's, zero N's. And I believe that Member Furlong has a motion, please.
I move that the record of proceedings of the regular board meeting of April 25, 2018, prepared by the board secretary, be approved, and that such records of proceedings be posted on the Chicago Board of Education website in accordance with Section 2.06B of the Open Meetings Act.
Is there a second?
I second.
Thank you. I'll proceed with a real call. Member Furlong?
Yes.
Member Garza?
Yes.
Vice President Guzman?
Yes.
Member Dr. Hines?
Yes.
Member Ward?
Yes.
And President Clark?
Yes.
Six I's, zero N's. Mr. President, I'll continue with a real estate item, and this item does require a vote. It is the resolution designating 5700 West Berto, the former Luther North High School, for potential acquisition. Mr. President, this item does require a vote.
If there are no objections from my fellow board members, please apply the last favorable roll call vote.
Thank you, Mr. President. I will continue with items on the public agenda and only read the board report numbers since the titles and board reports appeared on the public agenda. I will begin with a resolution that does not require a vote, and this is for RS1. Mr. President, this item just needs to be accepted by the board.
Please mark received and filed.
Thank you, Mr. President. I will continue with communications, and these items do not require a vote. The first communication is CO1, and this is regarding the location of our board meeting of June 27, 2018, and it reads, "This is to advise that the regular meeting of the Board of Education scheduled for Wednesday, June 27, 2018, will be held at the CPS Loop Office, 42 West Madison Street Garden Level Board Room. The board meeting will begin at 10:30 a.m., and public participation guidelines are available on www.cpsboe.org or by calling the board office at 773-553-1600. For the June 27, 2018 board meeting, advance registration to speak and observe will be available beginning Monday, June 25 at 10:30 a.m., and will close on Tuesday, June 26 at 5 p.m. or until all slots are filled. You can advance register during the registration period by the following methods, online, by phone, or in person. And the public participation segment of the meeting will begin as indicated in the meeting agenda and proceed for no more than the 60 registered speakers." I'll proceed with the, continue with the CO2 communication, and this communication is regarding the 2018-2019 schedule of regular board meetings on Board of Education, City of Chicago, and it reads, "To the members of the Board of Education, I am hereby submitting the 2018-2019 schedule of regular board meetings. The board meetings will be held on the fourth Wednesday of each month unless otherwise noted. The board meetings will be held at the CPS Loop Office, 42 West Madison Street Garden Level Board Room, and will begin at 10:30 until further notice. And again, advance registration for public participation. Will open the Monday proceeding of board meeting at 10:30 and close on Tuesday at 5 p.m. or until all slots are filled or otherwise noted. Advance registration is available for speakers and observers, and you could advance, you could advance register via online, by phone, or in person. And the public participation segment of the meeting will begin as indicated on the meeting agenda and proceed for more, no more than the 60 registered speakers. And further, let the official record reflect that the 2018-2019 planning calendar has been prepared in accordance with the Illinois Open Meetings Act and will be available for public distribution, and we will also update our corresponding website, cpsboe.org, Mr. President, as well as the cps.edu website with the schedule of dates for 2018 and 2019." Mr. President, I'll continue with additional items on the agenda that do require a vote, and we have EX1, EX2, and for the record, I would like to note an abstention for President Clark on EX2 for DePaul University. We then have PR 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8, 9, 10, 11, 12, 13, 14, 15, 16, 17, 18, 19. Moving on to PR 20, 21, 22, 23, and 24, and Mr. President, these items do require a vote.
If there are no objections from my fellow board members, please apply the last favorable roll call vote with the noted abstention.
Thank you, Mr. President. I will continue with one additional item that does not require a vote, and this is for AR1. Mr. President, this item just needs to be accepted by the board.
Please mark received and filed.
Thank you, and Mr. President, there are no further items on the public agenda.
Thank you. Is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
We are adjourned.